All right, good evening. I will call to order our April 8th City Council meeting. I am your Mayor Brendan Kalthus. We will start this meeting off with an invocation by Rabbi Abrams. So if everyone could please stand. Welcome.
A little bit of context. This coming week is Passover, which is the holiday of liberation for the Jewish people. Tomorrow is also the birthday of my Rabbi, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnerson. And he taught that the Messiah can come, that there's... He taught that the Messiah is the world becoming a good place and a holy place. And that's something that all of us have a part in creating. He believed that the world can become that good place. And the City Council has a very important part of making that happen. And I've said this many times before here at this podium, but this is my prayer. That all of us can create this beautiful world through fulfilling the seven commandments of Noah. God gave these commandments. Six of them were given to Adam, and the seventh was given to Noah. The seven commandments are to believe in one God, not to curse God, not to kill, not to steal, not to commit sexual crimes, to treat animals nicely, and finally to establish courts of justice. And the world becoming that good place, if you think about it, if the world just had these seven things, the world would be that good place. And the City Council here has a very important part in that. The seventh commandment is to establish courts of justice, to make a city that makes people's lives better. And I'm grateful that the city is such a wonderful city, and we feel so welcome here. And I'd like to bless all of City Council, everyone that works with the city, for the city, to fulfill your mission of that seventh commandment, to establish the courts of justice. May God bring success to the workers of your hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If everyone can please remain standing. If we can have Eagle Scout Blake Hearn come up to the podium here and lead us in the flag salute, that would be greatly appreciated. Want to come up to the podium? We will have you lead us in the flag salute, please.
All right. Everyone be ready for the Pledge of Allegiance here. You're all standing, so let's already check one. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay at the podium, too. And we'll start off with the certificate of recognition for Blake Hearn. Madam City Clerk, if you would like to read that certificate as I walk down to the podium here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have noted that all council members are present for roll call purposes, and I am happy to read the certificate of achievement for Blake Hearn, Troop 399. We congratulate Blake for earning his Eagle Scout rank, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. For his Eagle Scout service project, Blake designed, manufactured, and installed a library box outside the school gates on Crown Hill Elementary and Crown Hill HOA. We are proud of Blake's accomplishments and wish him continued success in his promising future. Congratulations, Blake. And I'm sure the mayor will ask you to share a little something about your project.
Yes, we would love to hear a few words from you.
Well, first of all, it was an honor to serve the community, making both the Crown Hill Library Box and the more recent HOA Flower Hill Park box. You know, I've lived in Temecula for a good five years now, and it's been great. I just love the community here, and I've made tons of friends that I will probably remember for the rest of my life. And it's just a great place, and I'm happy to contribute to it with what I can do. And, you know, I wouldn't be here without the help of my mom, my uncle, and just everyone who supported me along the way. And it was just a big project that it took a lot of discipline from both myself and, you know, those around me coming on time. And I just appreciate everyone's contributions, and I'm so thankful to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any words? I can... Councilmember Swank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Blake, thank you again for, you know, making these like really remarkable contributions to our community. I do have a question for you. So you made like a little free library box. Do... Are they registered on the little free library? Are they official little free libraries where they're registered? And there's like a map so we can explore? Because our family loves these boxes. They're really cool, and I know many other Temeculas do as well, so I was just curious.
So I believe one of them is.
Okay.
The one that I donated to the HOA is an official box. The other one, I handcrafted myself, so I do not think it is registered. However, that is something I can look into. I can... I've been to the website a couple times. I've looked around there. I can see if there's a way I can get it registered. That would be awesome. But if you're looking for it, it's at Crown Hill Elementary, and it's in a place where the gates are always open. So you can always just walk in. It's right along the exit. So if you're a parent coming to pick up your kid, it's right at the...
Perfect.
On the way out.
Thanks, Blake. Thank you.
Well, Blake, like Councilmember Swank said, first off, congratulations on becoming an Eagle Scout. It's a pretty amazing accomplishment. I think all of the attributes of an Eagle Scout are exactly what people look for in a leader. You know, and the things that you've done are... It's an amazing accomplishment, and you should be proud of that. And I wish we had pictures to put up of the mailboxes, but it was pretty amazing... Or the mailboxes, the book boxes, the bookstore box outside the schools. But if we had pictures of those, they'd see how amazing it is and the work that you put in to make that happen. So congratulations on behalf of the City of Temecula. We have this certificate of recognition and achievement for the Eagle Scout. We also have this pinned for you on Community Pride for the City of Temecula. So again, congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And families want to come up? Does Dad and... Is that little sister? Your sister want to come up? Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the City of Temecula Proclamation for Innovation Month. I will read that aloud. If Mary and your team want to come up, that would be great. "So whereas the City of Temecula works for its business community by progressively providing the highest quality of life and an environment where businesses can thrive; and whereas Temecula and Riverside County have become a hub on innovation, technology, and entrepreneurial activities that need to be highlighted throughout California; and whereas the City of Temecula acknowledges the value of encouraging innovation and supporting entrepreneurs and does such via the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange; and whereas the City of Temecula recognizes the value of creating an entrepreneurial ecosystem that supports the transfer of innovation, technology, and ideas; and whereas the Temecula appreciates its partnership with the Riverside County Office of Economic Development, the Small Business Development Center, and the Economic Development Coalition to help make Temecula a place for innovation and entrepreneurship. I now therefore, on behalf of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be Innovation Month for 2025." We would love to hear a few words before we take some pictures.
We actually have a presentation?
Oh, it'd be great. Presentation would be perfect.
Can I do that first?
Let's do the presentation first.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, and Happy Innovation Month. Alan Kay said it best, "The best way to predict the future is to invent it." Innovation is the spark that turns bold ideas into thriving businesses, fueling growth, igniting possibilities, and keeping the future just one bright idea away. I am Mary Cervantes, TVE Two Manager here with the City's Economic Development Department. This evening, to follow this exciting proclamation, we wanted to provide a presentation on some of the city's initiatives and efforts as they relate to innovation. In alignment with Riverside County's efforts, this is the city's eighth year highlighting Innovation Month, which is a dynamic initiative highlighting creativity, entrepreneurship, and technological advancement. The City of Temecula proudly joins this month-long celebration showcasing local talent, groundbreaking ideas, and innovative businesses, excuse me. Through workshops, pitch competitions, and networking opportunities, Temecula fosters a thriving ecosystem for startups and forward-thinking individuals, reinforcing our commitment to small business, innovation, and economic growth. For those that are interested in learning more about our county's Innovation Month efforts, please find a QR code on the screen that leads directly to the county's website. With that said, I'd also like to highlight the city's annual Southwest Region Quick Pitch Event, hosted in collaboration with our Southwest Region partners, the cities of Wildomar, Marietta, Menifee, and Lake Elsinore each year. Our next pitch event is actually scheduled for this Thursday, April 10th. And while the application for businesses is now closed or the application period, the event is open to the public, and we encourage anyone interested in attending to attend. And thank you, Councilmember Stewart, for participating on the judging panel this year. And as we explore the theme of innovation and entrepreneurship, I wanted to highlight a great resource that the City of Temecula offers, which is the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, also known as the TVE Two. TVE Two just hit a big milestone. We're celebrating 12 years in business, and it's located right here in Temecula on Business Park Drive. Some of you might recognize the building as our former city hall. And today, it serves as a business incubator and an entrepreneurial resource center. So with the business incubator, we provide low-cost, scalable office space and flexible workstations for rent. The incubator accommodates nine private offices and 21 open-air workstations. You'll see our standard fees and amenities listed here on the screen. We're proud to partner with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. Every new tenant receives a complimentary first-year chamber membership, which is invaluable. So thank you to the Temecula Chamber and Brook Nun President and CEO for partnering with us on that. We also offer on our amenities list 24/7 building access, because as you know, running a business can be around the clock. And some other perks, as you see on the screen, are high-speed internet, a kitchen facility, on-site USPS mailboxes, plenty of parking, and a lot more. So being a part of our incubator means more than just a workspace. Tenants get access to our Entrepreneurial Resource Center, which we'll share more about momentarily in a few slides. They get professional mentorship at no cost, free workshops and programs, and plenty of opportunities to network. If you're interested in joining, we do have an application and vetting process. And you can see a list of the steps on the slide here to obtain tenancy at the TVE Two incubator. And overall, typically, from the time that we have an applicant submit an application, it takes about six to eight weeks to obtain a space at the center. So currently, our private offices are full, but we have plenty of open-air workstations available, and we welcome new applications. If anyone in the public is interested, please feel free to reach out to us. You can apply on our website at temeculaca.gov/tve2. And currently, our incubator is home to 10 tenants across a range of industries, from construction and consulting to cutting-edge software and tech. You see some of the logos of our business incubator tenants on the screen here. And with that, I'd love to introduce one of our amazing tenants, Vivian Welsh, founder of Vivian's.io, a company that has been at the TVE Two for about a year now and is helping shape the future of AI. I'll hand it over to you, Vivian, to share more about your journey and your work.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you so much for all the support that we have received. We have had such amazing growth over the last year and a half. And just having the office space, having the support from Mary and everybody in the building has been phenomenal for us. It has given us validity where, you know, AI is... People look at you like you're selling snake oils already. But I have an office at the city building, so I must be okay, right? So we're just super thankful and grateful for all of the support that we've received. Oh, sure. We are currently working with many local businesses, and we implement AI automations as well as CRM systems. Normally, the CRM system is implemented first, and then we will bolt on AI automations. Whatever needs the customers have, we can usually create a system that will help streamline all of that for them. Something that's repetitive or, you know, boring to do, we can usually have an automation created utilizing AI. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Vivian. And I just have to add that Vivian's is also a partner of our Entrepreneurial Resource Center, so they offer classes in partnership with the ERC. So in addition to the incubator space, the TVE Two is also home to something really special, the first Entrepreneurial Resource Center, or ERC, in the entire region and quite possibly the entire country. We officially launched last January through a partnership with the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center, Riverside County, and the Inland Empire Center for Entrepreneurship at Cal State San Bernardino. The ERC brings together over 10 affiliate partners to offer free, high-quality support for startups and growing businesses. That includes year-round and no-cost technical assistance trainings and events and programs designed to help entrepreneurs launch and grow. Joining me today also is someone who plays a huge role in making all of that happen, Brene Hendricks. She's our ERC Program Manager with Cal State San Bernardino, and she really is the driving force behind the incredible programming that takes place at ERC. And with that, I want to hand it over to Brene to talk about the program overall as well as some of the exciting things we have coming up.
Vivian said it best. Just thank you to the city. Thank you for this partnership. Thank you specifically to Mary for being such an amazing advocate and champion for all the work that's happening in our ERC, but also just in the community more broadly. So hello, good evening. My name is Brene Hendricks, and I am the Program Manager for the Entrepreneurial Resource Center. And you can hear it in our name, right? We are a hub for resources for entrepreneurs in the region. And we have some very strategic partners that help us, you know, actually be able to give these services to the community. And we're, again, just very grateful for the City of Temecula being one of those strategic partners. We also have partners within the community, so other local small businesses that offer their education, their expertise, their experience to the community. And as Mary said, we have over 10 different affiliates that we work with, and we partner with them for them to be able to share their experiences and expertise with other small businesses, understanding those real-world challenges, taking their ideas from concept to consumer and being able to pass on that information. Now, if there's anyone that is interested in becoming an ERC affiliate, we do have a live application where people who, you know, are teaching everything from e-commerce strategies to financial literacy to profitability and sustainability within our community, this is how you get there. You can apply and share your expertise. With our partners, as Mary said, with Small Business Development Center, with the Women's Business Center, and our ERC affiliate partners, we are constantly hosting amazing community events at no cost to the community. But those are educational events. They are technical training-based events. Everything from, like I said, financial literacy to even... We have an OSHA certification coming up later this month. And so we're always offering innovative programming to make sure that our entrepreneurs have resources that are going to help them build, scale, and grow. One of the things that we're really excited about is our marketplace. And we actually have designed programming that helps and allows local entrepreneurs to understand what it takes to be ready to go to market. So everything from how do I get my licenses and certifications? How do I take... I'm from the fashion industry, so from dirt to shirt, how do we get there? What is necessary for us to be able to apply all of those things and legitimize and really professionalize our passions? So with our partnership with the SBDC, we have a program called SBDC Eats, and those are for our food-based businesses as well as Ready-Set Retail, which is for people who are, you know, artisans, our boutique owners, and things of that nature. We partnered with The Amazing City and hosted our first marketplace here in the City of Temecula for Small Business Saturday right after Thanksgiving. And we were right across from Santa, and he was so cutie. But this really gave our participants an opportunity to not just obtain the skills, but then actually be able to go forth and sell and make their first sale as a business owner, where we were able to provide them with a free booth and all of the licensing and certifications that they needed to be able to actually establish. And the marketplace was a huge success. Actually, one of our participants created a work for you. One of our participants actually created a cork-based... How... What would I call that? It was just...
Beautiful artwork, yep. She incorporated all of the wineries in Temecula to this beautiful artwork piece made out of corks.
Yes, and she was one of our program participants. So it was kind of a full-circle moment that she was able to do an affiliate program, participate in the marketplace, make this amazing thing for the mayor. So it was just a dynamic, really success story that we're extremely excited for and happy to be a part of, being able to share that as a partnership. Now, our next marketplace is coming up on June 28th, and it's from 8:00 to 12:30. And we're so excited, just once again, to be able to partner with the city, to be able to bring these resources to the entrepreneurial community, and really to be able to just continue to help build the innovation and entrepreneurship in the region. So thank you, Mary, and thank you, city.
Thank you so much, Brene. So yeah, anybody interested in attending our next Small Business Market, please join us on Saturday, June 28th. We are excited to host that at Sam Hicks Monument Park this year. And if you'd like to explore other upcoming workshops and programs, just scan the QR code on the screen. This will take you straight to our eCalendar where the public can easily... Or anybody interested can easily sign up for an upcoming workshop and just stay in the loop as well. I also want to highlight that in addition to the ERC, the TVE Two is home to the city's workforce development and youth programs hosted by the city's Community Services Department. You can see some of those programs listed here on the screen. And having these programs based at the TVE Two really helps us create a strong connection between emerging talent and the city's broader workforce initiatives. So truly, we're building pathways to opportunity and helping prepare the next generation for meaningful careers as well. And next up, let's talk about our impact so far. So on the screen, here are some of our key metrics that we track at the ERC, showing what we've accomplished since launch. Actually, these metrics are since launch. So in the past 14 months or so, we've provided mentorship and training to nearly 10,000 business owners and entrepreneurs. Out of that, 54 new businesses have launched, over 4,500 jobs have been supported, and nearly $3 million has been invested back into our communities. We've also hosted over 250 small business and workforce-related training events. Those are in-person and virtual. And I just want to note here that while these numbers reflect activity in the Southwest region, our reach extends even beyond that across the region and beyond. And one last exciting update I'm proud to share on behalf of our entire team, that the ERC was selected for the 2025 Cal Ed Awards of Excellence to receive an award of merit in the Programs and Promotions category. So this award will be recognized and received at Cal Ed's Celebrating Success Luncheon in May. And this just shows the meaningful recognition of the innovation and the impact that these programs are making in our community and beyond. But that is all I have. That wraps up my presentation. Thank you so much. We're here to answer questions, myself and Brene and the team, if you have any.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Swank?
I always feel like I got something to say. Mary, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your work at TVE Two and everything you're doing over there. You've certainly taken it to the next level, I think. And then I appreciate hearing really like the individual stories that come out of this sort of incubator, right, of innovating. And I think, you know, our future is going to need big thinkers. It's going to need big ideas, bold ideas. This isn't a nice-to-have amenity. This is a need. Our community needs this, and I think the impact will be something that we'll see going forward. But I appreciate all the work that's going on over there. Good stuff. Thanks.
I do have one thing. So the fast pitch that is this Thursday, if you've ever seen the show Shark Tank, that's essentially what this is. So it's a really fun event to come and watch because it's really new ideas popping out of people's heads. And it's really kind of fun to see what people come up with and the methods and the way they plan to get there. So it's really a fascinating event. So I love going to these and love judging them, too. But anyways, thanks.
Well, the results speak for themselves. Pretty amazing what you're doing over there. And you know you're starting to be innovative when other cities and jurisdictions try to implement what we have already implemented with the TVE Two and the ERC. So thank you for all that you do. And I know on behalf of the City of Temecula, we're appreciative of the partnership.
Thank you.
Yeah, if everyone wants to come up, we'll take a group picture. And if my colleagues want to come down for a group picture, that would be awesome. All right, moving right along here. We have no Boarding Commission reports tonight, so we'll move on to our Public Safety Report, which will be done by our City Manager, Aaron Adams.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Chief Crater is on personal leave this evening. I told him I'd pinch-hit for him, or at least attempt to. On the screen there, you can see the stats and the breakdown of calls for service in the month of March. No surprise, you know, they remain very busy, and the majority of all of our firefighter calls are falling into the medical emergency there. You can see it, 656 calls for service, or medical aid, of a total of 765 calls in the month of March. And then that red pie chart there is just significant on calls for service and medical emergencies. And year-to-date, 2,700 calls for service. And while the chief, hopefully he's listening, we're sending our love and prayers to him. And if he was here, I know he would want to share, and maybe he will at a future council meeting, but a couple weeks ago, he led the charge in putting on the Firehouse Family Retreat up in Idlewild. And if you're not familiar with what that is, it's really a once-a-year opportunity to invite firefighters and their families off-site. And Councilman Ron, maybe you'll speak to this later on, for family time, for retreat, for mental health, just getting away from what they see each and every day. And so, super important. Chief Crater is passionate about that. That's in his wheelhouse, and he does an amazing job setting that up. And so I know that was a success with over 100 families of firefighters attending the 2025. So that concludes my fire department report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have one public comment on a non-agendized items. The speaker is Greg Lingworthy. Sir, you have three minutes.
Welcome.
I haven't done this before, trying to show things.
Should I just put it up and put the paper underneath it? It should pop up for you there. If you put up the...
And then how do I just... Adjust it? Okay, so I've got four slides. So first, how come I'm bringing this to you? Our Constitution guarantees us a republican form of government, so that's one thing you guys may acknowledge to the Constitution to do, is to oversee our election system. We've been in Congress...
What we did is we counted up all the paper receipts, and we subtracted all the ballots that were rejected. So it's a very easy math problem. We got a number that came in from the drop boxes and the post office. We got all the ballots that came in from those vote centers, those were in-person. And then we rejected, subtracted, that's the red, all the ballots that were rejected. Those are signatures that didn't match, and the ROV said, no, we can't count those. So we subtracted those. We came up with 925,210, and then we compared that to the machine count. That's every ballot goes through those Dominion machines. What did Dominion come up with? Came up with 959,098. That's a difference of 33,888 ballots. It doesn't balance. The ROV and our supervisors understand that's a problem. The ROV is going to try to reconcile, and this Thursday, they're going to give us an explanation. Supervisor Spiegel and Prez will be there. I'll come back and report what they say.
Thank you, Mr. Langworthy. Do we have any more public comments?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
With that, we'll move on to our city council reports. Any of my colleagues have?
Officially have a report, but I was just made aware yesterday that there's going to be a cruise that's going to go, start from the Big Flag over there on Temecula Parkway on Front Street, go all the way up the old 395, and end up in Marietta. So, if you want to see a lot of classic cars Thursday night, come to Old Town here, find a restaurant to have a drink at or something, and watch the parade of cars. So it's going to start about 5:30-ish. That's when I'm supposed to actually stage over there. So it could be a really fun evening here in Old Town if you're around and you want to see some classic cars before the rod run in two weeks. So there.
Love it, thank you. Councilmember Ron?
No, I'm good. I was going to report on the family retreat for firefighters, but I'll wait until Chief Crater is back.
You got it. Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I have a couple of slides, if we could throw just the first one up. So, Community Services does a great job, especially with respect to our Easter egg hunts. I don't know if you've ever been to any of these Easter egg hunts, but they can be rather exciting, although the retrieval of the eggs lasts for about three seconds. But I wanted to let the community know that we have some events coming up. So we have three separate events, and the first one there is a Teen Night Egg Hunt, which is really exciting for our teens, really family-friendly environment, where our teens are able to win like some cool prizes and stuff. So that's a hit every year. So Friday, April 11th, at 7:30, this is going to be at the Sports Ranch at Sommers Bend. And then we do have the Skip Easter Party, so this is our special needs skip. This is at Margarita Community Park, sorry, Mike Nigar Community Park, and this is a pre-registration required event, so make sure you check on our guide or reach out to staff on that. It'll be Saturday, April 12th, starting at 9:00 in the morning. And then the Super Bowl of Easter egg hunts is Saturday, April 19th, at 10:00 AM sharp. If you show up at 10:02, it's going to be over, although staff will do a really good job and try to give you some leftover random eggs that are saved, although they do save some for folks that show up late. So, but do not show up late, you will be highly disappointed. We do it at three parks every year, Harvesting Community Park, we do it at Virtual Sports Park, and we do it at Temecula Hills Park. So, come out and enjoy those exciting events. Next slide. This is a new event, this is Young Men's Career Conference. We do the Young Women's Career Conference, and this is really, sort of builds off of that. The one thing that I like about it, it isn't just sort of an event to do it, right? Like, well, we do a young women's event, well, we should do a young men's event. Well, it's meaningful, so a lot of the fields that will be represented are typically not dominated by men, so, which is something that, you know, when you look at, you know, especially like K-5 education, it's typically, there's a lot of women who are teachers in K-5. And so to have a K-5 teacher that'll be there to sort of be an inspiration, because our kids need balance, right? They need to have male teachers especially. So, this is an important event, it's Thursday, April 17th, from 8:00 to 10:00. It's right across the hall there in our conference center. You can see, for more information, you can email the work programs at temeculacat.gov for attending or for your child, if your child wants to attend that event. And so, really excited for that. Thank you, TCSD. Next slide. A couple of weeks ago, I did sort of a tour of some affordable housing developments in our community, and these are just some photos from some of them. So I went to Mission Village Apartments, which is on Pujoel, I went to Las Haciendas, which is on Jefferson, I went to Warehouse at Creekside, which is here in Old Town, and then I went to Rancho Las Bolssas, which is over across from the Duck Pond. That top-left photo is one of the views from this apartment, actually just below it. And these are affordable homes in our community, which are needed and valuable. One thing, there was a couple of things. So we spoke with a resident at Las Haciendas, and I actually think I want to try to get her to come in and tell her story, because it was really powerful. We stood in her kitchen for, you know, 20 minutes and talked, and it was really uplifting for me to hear, you know, how the investment in affordable housing helps, like those tangible, like you're touching people, in a really positive way. And then, one thing we heard from everyone that was on-site, from a management perspective, is the amount of people that inquire about renting these apartments is they think they're market rate. So they don't look different than, an affordable housing unit doesn't look different than a market rate unit. And unfortunately, for a lot of the people that reached out, they certainly didn't qualify for some of these apartments. So, that was a really good day for me, and so I appreciate, you know, community development staff for coming out with me and seeing these four properties in our community and the impact that they have, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem Alexander?
Yes, I just have a, just a little report that I just want to give out. Today, I had the opportunity to meet with staff and also the city council members in Menifee, and that was Mayor Protem Lovell and city council member Lori Stone. I just want to push it out there that it was great conversation, we talked about homelessness issues, what's going on, what our cities exactly are doing individually, also as a team, and how we can continue to work together to mitigate the issues of homelessness and transience here in our city. But I just want to encourage our city, I want to encourage Marietta, I want to encourage all the cities, that we're going to continue to work together, we're going to continue to do the best we can for the individuals that need help, and be able to get them the resources and help that they're needing, no matter what. So, I just want to just put that out there, kind of as a little update and report, that conversations are being had. The city is doing fantastic work in the homelessness zone and area, and that we will continue to make sure that we're constantly on top of it, working with staff, first responders, and even behavioral health individuals as well, to just get people the help that they're needing. So, just very, very excited about that, and that was it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of March 25, 2025. Number three, approve listed demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report for the period of February 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2025. Item number five, adopt ordinance number 2025-04, amending sections 3.32.010 and 3.32.030 of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Public Works Bidding Threshold, second reading. Item number six, approve agreement with Inland Empire Property Services for We Debatement Services. Item number seven, approve agreement with TY Lynn International for the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase 3, PW 19-03. Item number eight, approve First Amendment with Ascent Environmental, Inc., for preparation of subsequent environmental impact report for Temecula Valley Hospital Master Plan, PA 22-0105. Item number nine, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for traffic signal system upgrade protected, permissive signal heads, Project PW 19-09. Item number 10, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the Community Recreation Center Splash Pad and Sun Shade, PW 21-07, rebid. Item number 11, establish always stop control at the intersection of Loma Linda Road and Redwood Road, White Sage Way. Item number 12, receive and file temporary street closures for 2025 Spring Fest events. If none of my colleagues want to pull an item, I will accept a motion for...
Move approval.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Is our electronic voting back up, or are we doing verbal voting tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we are doing a verbal roll call, so, Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Kalphus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, and with that, we will recess the city council meeting to our scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Services District with President Schwenk.
I think, Mr. Mayor, we'll call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Secretary, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mr. President, I will note that we do not have any public comments on non-agenda items, and in addition, on the TCSD Consent Calendar, with respect to item number 14, number two under number 14, the non-exclusive agreement with West SWPP Services, and the amount of $60,000, they have withdrawn tonight. Council will be taking no action on that portion of that item. Council will only be considering number one, non-exclusive agreement with Wild Wild West Junk Removal LLC, and the amount of $1.5 million.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that. We'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. We do have two items. Item 13 is approve action minutes of March 25, 2025. Bless you. We have item 14, approve two non-exclusive contractor services agreements with Wild West Junk Removal LLC and West SWPP Services for Dangerous and Unhealthy Homeless Encament Cleanup, with the noted changes. So we're just voting on item one, non-exclusive agreement with Wild West Junk Removal LLC, and the amount of $1.5 million. With that, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll call vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalphus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, everyone. We'll move on to our Director of Community Services report. Do you have anything tonight, Director Rousseau?
Yes, just a couple of slides. Okay, so first of all, we'd like everybody to come out and visit us during our Chile Culture Day, which will be over at the Temecula Valley Museum and Sam Hicks Monument Park. That's on Saturday, April 12th, from 11:00 to 1:00 PM, and you can have fun experiencing the music, art, and food of Chile. Next slide, please. We will be doing a Combined Earth and Arbor Day Celebration on Saturday, April 19th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Harvesting Community Park. Get to celebrate both of these great days over there, and I believe, I'm looking over at Tracy, we will be doing some tree planting, is that correct? We will be planting some trees. Come on out and plant some trees with us. Next slide, please. Oh, that's all my slides, isn't it? That concludes my report.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. General Manager, anything?
Not some further, Mr. President.
All right, thanks. Sir, Board of Directors, anything? All right, moving on, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
All right, the successor agency of the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, Temecula Housing Authority, Temecula Public Finance Authority, no meetings for those. So we will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and go to our business items. We will start with item number 15, receive updated presentation regarding wildfire mitigation efforts and provide general direction regarding the same, at the request of Councilmember Ron. Can I have a staff report, please? Mr. Watson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, as you mentioned, is a wildfire preparedness and prevention potential work plan. This item is a follow-up to a presentation you all received on March 11th, from the Temecula Fire Department, our Emergency Management Division and Community Development, where we went over all the current wildfire mitigation efforts currently underway and planned within the city of Temecula. As a result of that, council directed staff to develop a sort of work plan, providing description and cost and timing for the key mitigation measures that were brought up. There were six items that were brought up, and you can see them here. The first was Caltrans vegetation clearance under the I-15 freeway, so we'll discuss that. The full implementation of the existing community wildfire protection plan, and moving on to a potential citywide community wildfire protection plan. Community wildfire outreach and education, which has several subcomponents, evacuation planning, and emergency operations center exploration. So many of these items are currently underway, so we'll be happy to report on that, and Caltrans vegetation clearance under I-15 is one of those items. So, just to orient you, this is the Temecula Creek here, this is the I-15 freeway. As you can see, outlined in blue, is the area of responsibility of Caltrans. So, Caltrans, and I have to give all the credit to our Public Works Director, Ron Moreno, who's spearheaded this effort and worked with our Caltrans friends up in San Bernardino. And I can report that work on this clearance is supposed to start in mid-April, so they're going to go through and remove dead and invasive vegetation, preserve wildlife habitat, and this effort will be compliant with our CWPP, so it'll be another element of the CWPP that's being implemented. And, best of all, no cost to the city, because Caltrans is funding the entire thing. Next is the full implementation of the community wildfire protection plan. I reported on this last time in March. This is the I-15 freeway here, this is Temecula Parkway, this is Pachanga Parkway, this is the Temecula Creek Inn Golf Course. The area outlined in yellow is the area that has been mitigated by the Flood Control District at no cost to the city, which was the first element of the CWPP, the current CWPP that has been completed. Over here is the Caltrans area that will be mitigated by Caltrans themselves. There is a little bit of area over here, to the west of the I-15, and then east of Pachanga Parkway, along Temecula Creek, about a quarter mile to a half a mile eastward, that is yet to be completed, and that would be the area that would be under consideration for more work. Like I said, it's partially, the CWPP that we currently have is partially implemented through the County Flood Control District and Caltrans, and we're estimating the cost to the city to complete the rest of the mitigation, with hopefully some more flood control participation, because there's, east of Pachanga Parkway, the ownership of the creek is both Flood Control District and the city of Temecula, that we would be able to capture some funding from the county. And the timing for this is, as I mentioned, is it's underway. That brings us to a citywide community wildfire protection plan, what we call CWPP. The one I just mentioned is very limited, it's just for the Temecula Creek and the Confluence area. And to do a citywide, we would go through the same process, obviously it would be more expansive. The plan would cover all areas of the city that were appropriate. We would seek grant funding, just like we did for the first CWPP for the planning phase, and then work on figuring grant funding or other ways to fund the implementation phase. And we're costing that out between $500 and $2 million, dependent on many things. The timing for that, we're estimating it two years. That includes the grant application process, the planning phase process, and the getting to the implementation process. It's hard to tell you what the implementation timing would be. Pachanga Parkway, along Temecula Creek, about a quarter mile to a half a mile eastward that is yet to be completed, and that would be the area that would be under consideration for more work. Like I said, it's partially, the CWPP that we currently have is partially implemented through county flood control district and Caltrans, and we're estimating the cost to the city to complete the rest of the mitigation with hopefully some more flood control participation, because the, there's east of Pachanga Parkway, the ownership of the creek is both flood control district and the city of Temecula, that we would be able to capture some funding from the county. And the timing for this is, as I mentioned, is it's underway. That brings us to a citywide community wildfire protection plan, what we call CWPP. The one I just mentioned is very limited, it's for, just for the Temecula Creek and the Confluence area. And to do a citywide, we would go through the same process, obviously it would be more expansive. The plan would cover all areas of the city that were appropriate. We would seek grant funding, just like we did for the first CWPP for the planning phase, and then, and then work on figuring grant funding or other ways to fund the implementation phase. And we're costing that out between five hundred and two million dollars, dependent on many things. The timing for that, we're estimating it two years. That includes the grant application process, the planning phase process, and the getting to the implementation process. It's hard to tell you what the implementation timing would be until we actually do the planning phase, so one to two years for that. Next, we have the wildfire outreach and education, and there are a number of subcomponents here. And I think as, after learning more about the Fire Safe Council and the Firewise Community, I think these all actually kind of work together, but I'll go one by one and describe them, and then we'll discuss that after. So the Fire Safe Council is a community-based organization, usually a nonprofit or volunteer-run organization that works to educate, organize, and mobilize residents to make their communities more resilient and safe from wildfire. So the purpose is to focus on wildfire prevention, preparedness, and mitigation at the local level, especially in high-risk areas like California's wild, wildland urban interface zones, which Temecula has many of. So who's involved? So it's local residents, fire departments, local governments, utility companies, land management agencies, and community organizations like HOAs and others. And what do they do? They organize fuel reduction projects like brush clearing and prescribed burns, educate homeowners on defensible space and home hardening, help communities develop evacuation plans, insist applying, in applying for grants to fund wildlife mitigation, and partner with programs like the Firewise USA, which is next. So Firewise Community is, is a neighborhood, not an entire city, but a neighborhood within the city or a community that has taken proactive steps to reduce the risk of wildfire damage to homes and property. It's part of a national program by the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, in collaboration with federal agencies like the U. S. Forest Service. So a Firewise Community would develop a risk assessment of their, of their neighborhood, develop an action plan, get their community involved, make whatever investment, small annual investment they need to, to do implementation, and then get recognized as a Firewise Community. And some of the benefits of this could be, obviously would be improved safety and preparedness and possible insurance discounts, which I know is a major issue right now, and then, of course, stronger community engagement and communication. So that's Firewise Safety Council, Fire Safe Council and Firewise Community. The next three kind of go along with that. So HOA collaboration kind of fit right into both the Fire Safe Council and the Firewise Community efforts. And as I mentioned, part of the Fire Safe Council and Firewise Community efforts is to educate their constituents on home hardening and information on those recommendations. And then finally, the Wildland Urban Interface or WUI Day, which has been described to us as something similar to the Great Shakeout, which I think we're all familiar with in terms of, it's an earthquake preparedness event that takes place. This would be similar to that, but for wildfire. So all of these kind of work together. There's, there's kind of the concept that you could stand up a Fire Safe Council of members of the community and, and the city and all those that I previously mentioned. And that Fire Safe Council could then work with HOAs to develop Firewise Communities throughout the city, provide the information on home hardening, obviously with, in collaboration with the city, and could be the organizing entity for the Wildland Urban Interface or WUI Day. So to stand this up, it's mostly the cost of mostly city staff and volunteer time. That's just to stand these things up, and then there would obviously be some kind of financial, unknown financial contribution as implementation went forward into the future. And the timing on this is some elements we can do immediately, and some elements like the Wildland Urban Interface Day would take more planning and time. Evacuation planning, now this, I, this is like the Caltrans work, the first item, this is already underway. So city, our city emergency management division is developing a plan as we speak. It's got a relatively low cost, and we're, the city is funding it, and it's, it's got a one to one and a half year timeframe, which is also good, because it lines up to be complete, you know, just before or a little bit before, we're expecting the general plan to be drafted up, and so we'll be sliding this plan into the general plan in, in that timeframe. And finally, the biggest item on the list is the Emergency Operations Center. I think everybody understands what that generally means. There are a lot of things that go into thinking about an emergency operations center and many things that we don't even know yet, but we would have to do some significant planning to bring that forward. But there are some obvious things like the facility design and infrastructure, technology and communication, which I'm told is one of the major components, obviously personnel and the training of that personnel, the operational framework and policies, and funding and ongoing operations and budgeting. The development cost depended on many variables, including, you know, whether land or a building need to be purchased or built, technological requirements, and successful acquisition of grant funding. So the cost for something like this, five million dollars is about the, the low range that we've, we've found, and it can go up, and it's all dependent on the scope, on what, what you would want to do. You can go much higher, but it's just, it really depends on the scope of the project. The timing on this is obviously long-term planning. We would have to do some serious long-term planning, and that would be over multiple So that is all the items that we were required to bring back, and I am open for any, answer any questions, and I know we have our public works director and community development director available as well.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff prior to discussion? Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on the matter? All right, with that being said, I will kick it off to Councilmember Ron to start us off on discussion.
Well, good, well, I'll keep it brief. Great staff report. I think it captured a lot of the late discussion we had a couple of weeks ago on this item. I'm glad to see the, that Caltrans and county flood and a lot of our partners are doing the right thing and aggressively attacking the issue of fuel reduction, especially on the south side of town there, where we have our, I think arguably our highest risk. So very happy to see that moving forward. And I do think that, you know, from a community-wide perspective, seeing a citywide CWPP is an important process for us to be able to understand and be able to mitigate exactly the, the risk that, that we're dealing with. Murieta, I know, is going out to bid soon on their own citywide CWPP, so as we start moving forward on this, we should definitely coordinate with, you know, activities from the county and our, and our neighboring cities, along with Pachanga, which usually is part of the planning process anyway, but just throwing it out there. But the one, one concern I do have is, it is a, typically a grant-driven process, and state budget and federal budget being what it is, those are the two main granting sources. And the long-term prospects and stability on those grant dollars over the next couple of years, I, you know, just got back from Vegas, and I wouldn't be laying a bet on that right now if I were you. So that said, and I don't think we have to come to some concurrence tonight, and maybe we have this discussion during the, the budget meetings later, but, you know, I have no problem putting a one to two-year timeline on seeking grants, but at some point, you know, I'm not willing to let the city go without a community-wide protection plan just because we're waiting on funding from an outside source. I think it's an important enough issue that if we, you know, obviously it would be best to get it grant-funded if we can, but if we're not successful in, in some discrete time period, I think it's best that we, you know, fund this ourselves. So I'll bring that item back, just, just kind of giving the city manager and council a heads up on my, my perspective on that. The other thing is the new hazard maps are out, and I think we all have a recent briefing on that, and, and I, I don't think that the, the risk has necessarily changed in Temecula, it's just the state's ability to better calibrate current risk that we have. And so if you do look at the new updated hazard maps, you may see that your, your home is now, you know, in a moderate or high-risk space, whereas the prior maps, it simply wasn't. Doesn't necessarily mean that the risk has changed. Again, nothing much has, but it just means that we're better at understanding and estimating those risks, and that's the result of that. But I think that's an important wake-up call for a lot of our community, because it does identify a lot of additional areas that we had previously sort of underrepresented in this conversation. The other thing I want to mention, too, is, you know, as we're talking about all of this and putting together different timelines and budgets on what we should be doing for the community to reduce our risk and, and help harden our communities, there is some common sense solutions right now that we could be working on that are, you know, low-hanging fruit that can easily help reduce community-wide wildfire risk. And so, you know, working with chief crater, and I know talented folks here at the city, those are pretty easy to identify. And so I'd like to make sure that as part of this discussion, as part of this process, let's make sure we put those on the table, and I have a, you know, long list that I can, that I can give you that are, you know, little to no cost, but can make some fairly significant differences in, in town. And so with or without a CWPP in place, I think there are things that we should definitely get more aggressive on. And that, you know, and especially, I think, regular messaging to our, our own community. And that brings us to the, the comment that was made on the HOAs and having them, you know, be part of this conversation and engage, and, you know, this also relates to item seventeen a little bit later, but, you know, our HOAs are, are great resources for our residents, they help manage properties, they do a lot of things, but they also play a very important role in not just managing the common space and landscaping and other, other things, but, you know, they also play an important role in making sure that people are compliant within their own communities as well. So, you know, it, it occurred to me as we're talking about this item and then a little bit further on the mail theft issue as well, that, that maybe we start to contemplate, and this is sort of a separate item, I realize, but it occurred to me that maybe we start to contemplate maybe an annual workshop or something with HOA, you know, board members and their management agencies and all of that, where it doesn't have to be a full-day, you know, sort of ordeal, but an opportunity to say, hey, HOAs, here's some great information you can give out to your residents as part of your, you know, way to reduce community risk, here's some good home hardening tips that are, that are new, here's some suggestions on how to reduce mail theft, you know, whatever it is, but just once a year, and then to be able to hear from them to see, you know, what is it that, that, you know, we could be collaborating on, or what are issues that they're seeing that they may not be bringing to the attention of the city. But in particular, with regard to, you know, the fire risk, I think that sort of annual function might be a very important one. And then as far as the evacuation planning, I'm thrilled to see that that's being funded and moving forward. I think that's, it's a critical piece for any community to have. And again, in that sort of meetings with the HOA, being able to provide individual communities with their own information on how they themselves would evacuate, not just the citywide evacuation, that's, it's a fairly rare occurrence, but within components of the city, to be able to allow residents just to understand, where, where are the staging areas, where do I evacuate to, what are the important routes, when I get a reverse nine-one-one call, what does that mean, you know, all of the logistics, so that it's not chaotic and not necessarily a, a complete surprise. But one of the things that needs to be done that's often not done in evacuation planning is worst-case scenario. And we talked a little bit about this at a recent meeting with WR Cog, we were talking about transportation modeling and all that, and, and, you know, WR Cog, we definitely should be coordinating the evacuation planning with the work they have done in that same space. But one of the failures of a lot of evacuation plans is it's not done at, you know, peak rush hour traffic on a busy holiday, you know, three-day weekend on, you know, a Friday or whatever, to be able to demonstrate that, you know, yes, a general evacuation plan is, is critical, but also understanding what those massive limitations are under that sort of worst-case scenario. And I think that as a tool, just to be able to flip to that page at the EOC on the day that it's needed, can really help identify, you know, this is what needs to be done. Anyway, I, I'll stop there. I think this is great. I love to see all this work moving forward, and I'm happy to, to vote on this thing moving forward tonight.
Do we need a motion to continue the work that is already being done, or would you just like staff to continue what's already been put in place?
Well, I, I, yeah, so, I mean, I know there's still a lot of details, like we don't have great dollar ranges for, you know, some of these items and things, right? And it's a little bit still nebulous without, you know, actual bids and, and that. But, but I would like to see this continue, and, and I think there are some, like I said, easy wins here that are low-hanging fruit that can be quickly implemented according to staff report. And then those longer-term, you know, items, I'd just like to see us continue to bring those back and make sure we're making progress on them. But, you know, that the city council, I think, here tonight, I guess the motion may, maybe just sort of adopt this, this framework of a, a strategy moving forward, I assume.
Would that be a clear motion for you, Madam City Clerk? Or do you need any clarification?
So the, so there are six items, and none of them are being specifically, the direction's not specifically to work on any of them, it's just to move forward with this as a framework for the things we want to do as we move forward into the future. There might be some discussions at the budget workshop as it relates to a citywide CWPP, that's the most concrete direction that I've heard so far tonight. Is that generally close to what you were thinking?
Wait, can you pull that list up again?
Yeah.
Real quick, yeah.
Mayor Proton, do you have anything?
I do have a quick question. So right now, just remind me, staff or Matt, we have, obviously you're looking at the EOC, and that's big dollars, right? We have two currently right now, what, is that correct? We have split one area of the city and one on the other. I'm gonna look at you, too.
Yeah, we have two EOCs. We have one, we have one on, on the east side of the freeway and one on the west side of the freeway. And currently, we, we, the one in this building is the one that's outfitted, not to the level that you saw on the screen there, but that serves as our primary EOC. In the event that we need to stand up a secondary one, we have the ability to do that over near Fire Station Eighty-four as well, the library.
Okay, so is it something that that's a definite, like, real need for the city right now, looking fiscally? Is that something we're needing, or are we just, I mean, some of these ideas are awesome. I'm very excited about it. I think, you know, being aggressive, like I think you said, Councilmember Ron, definitely be aggressive. I'm just curious, just getting a little bit more understanding about the EOC, the salaries, like, do we have anything on that, or just?
Yeah, Councilman Ron nailed it. I, I don't currently have a budget for, for an EOC operation, or a new EOC for that matter. We definitely will do everything in our power, if it's the direction of the council, to pursue aggressively federal and state funding, but what I heard was up to a point. And, and so if we were, if you were asking me two years from now, you know, to fund a, a five-million-dollar EOC, we'll cross that bridge, but I don't, I don't have a capital line item set aside for this. It's not something that's, it's in our short-range plan, but if that becomes a priority of one-time costs, we'll figure it out, but it'll come at the expense of something else. I mean, that, that's what you're gonna start hearing from me, is we can fund these things, but they're gonna come at the expense of something already planned.
Absolutely. No, thank you very much, City Manager, I appreciate it. And the other thing I, I'm really thankful to see also that you're bringing up is the evacuation plan. That is something I think that many residents have talked to us about. I think it's just gonna be really, really beneficial, so I appreciate you bringing that up into the city, because I think that can really put some peace in people's minds on how to evacuate appropriately and safely. So that was it.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, like, I, I think about all this, and, and I, it's gonna add a ton of value to the community, right? Like, having, you know, these, these plans in place and, and, you know, even an EOC, although, you know, I didn't fully understand, you know, what that would look like operationally, like, for a city our size. So, but I can, like, sort of, like, conceptually get behind this in, in a pretty significant way. You know, when you brought it at the couple meetings or whatever it was, you know, like, I was just seeing dollar signs in my head, you know, I was like, okay. And, and even just sort of making some notes about the cost of this, and, and while we need to be very mindful of that, I don't know if that's like the best metric to, you know, to like, think about some of this stuff, like, well, it costs too much, we shouldn't do it. Like, clearly, like, there's a lot of value in, in doing this. Like, there just is, right? To be protected, to plan ahead, to have big, bold ideas, you know, like, thinking forward, I think that's all good. I'm just, I'm a little gun-shy of just, like, sort of, like, approving this here. I, I think, like, as much as it pains me to say, like, do a subcommittee or something, like, I think there's, like, a ton of work that needs to be done before we sort of get here and just so, like, oh, well, you know, let's just, you know, sort of, you know, move this through. I know coming, you know, very soon, that, but, and I'm thankful you brought up the fact that you would talk about this at the budget workshop. that you would talk about this at the budget workshop, because I do think that there, there are going to be some tough decisions that we're gonna have to make in the near future, right? There just are. And then the uncertainty of some, some of the, of the economic indicators and some of the economic uncertainty that we're seeing right now is concerning. But I, I support this wholeheartedly. I do. I think it's important. I think it's valuable. But how we get there, I think, is probably, probably more important rather than, and I appreciate the time that staff took to do this, but we're really only talking about a couple of weeks of staff time. And like, one of these items could be a subcommittee and there's six here, you know? So, I'd like to see, I'd like to see this at a subcommittee for that, more of that long-range. How does this tie in to some of the other plans that we have? You've already mentioned, you know, WR Cog and evacuation and, and we're, we're doing circulation elements and general plan stuff. So like, how does that, how does all this tie in? I would feel much more comfortable with a yes, you know, supporting this with that sort of framework versus, you know, just sort of, is this motion capture everything we want and then turns, you know, staff loose to a certain, to a certain extent and then come back with, you know, sort of harder numbers? But I'd like to see us work through this or see a subcommittee. If we have one that already that, that fits neatly, then great. If we don't, then maybe we create one and, and you can head that up. So, that's, that's my two cents. But it's good stuff. I support it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I totally agree with Councilmember Swank. I think a subcommittee really is kind of the best place for this to go. And, you know, the low-hanging fruit, that's the easy part. That's the stuff that I think everybody will see visually too, you know? So that, that'll give the sense of hardening of our fireproofness. What I get frustrated with is here we have ISO rating of two and we're all getting canceled by our insurance companies because we're quote-unquote in a high fire zone. And that's so frustrating when you look around and you've got plowed fields everywhere around you and you're still getting canceled because you live next to a plowed field. And it's like, so I feel like as a, as a consumer homeowner, that no one cares at the insurance level. I mean, we're doing this for us, this whole hardening thing. This is about keeping Temecula safe. Hundred percent behind it. But my frustration is with the insurance companies and the state of California and their lack of understanding of what we're dealing with. And, you know, and it takes a whole couple of cities to burn down for them to even get a clue now. And so, so that's where I'm frustrated, but I'm definitely a hundred percent behind this. But I do like to, I, I, I think it should go to a subcommittee that we can kind of hammer out and, and even implement, you know, even if we want to push out some of these from a subcommittee and, you know, implement it, you know, bring it to the city council, let's just pick them off one by one. So, so yeah, I'm definitely supportive, but I'm frustrated and my head hurts when it comes to what the state does with this, so.
No, and I would agree with what my colleagues have already said. As far as this plan goes, the wildfire mitigation, I think all six of these are something that we can absolutely get behind and something that our city needs, needs to implement with the CWPP and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the evacuation, evacuation plan and the EOC, all of those are definitely things that we need to do and do more exploration on all of those and come forward with a legit plan. And I agree with them as well, that I think that the most work that will be done is in a subcommittee. And I would levy to my colleagues that I think that Ron and myself would be great partners in that subcommittee with our background in firefighting and brush clearance, working with cert teams and all of that. But I definitely think the subcommittee, and I don't think we have a subcommittee that would, that would fit this one.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna throw out an idea. With respect to, well, if I'm going down this list, number one, we, we heard the council loud and clear, I think that one is, is imminent and, and we're gonna check that box. That's a good thing. Number, number two and three, I believe as Luke mentioned, you know, that, that does fall into the general plan arena. We have a general plan ad hoc and Peter was generally comfortable considering utilizing the general plan ad hoc, which I believe is Mayor Kalfis and Councilman Ron, if I'm not mistaken, right? So maybe we utilize the general plan ad hoc. We, we pick the CWPP items that are kind of relevant, that fit into that, and then we, we regroup, you know, with, with you all. And then we could come back to the full council, of course. But we'd be working in tandem over the next 18 months as we're working on the general plan stuff. I think this fits into, into that. Luke, would you be comfortable with that approach?
Totally agree, especially, and, and you throw in the evacuation plan, that's part of our general plan, that's going into the general plan, so.
Yeah, and the evac plan, you saw where, you know, we have a, a small dollar fiscal assigned to that. Michael is, talked to me about this and he's proposing, we're proposing to do this in-house. That's why we're, we're saving some money there. And so we're gonna use the resources that we have, try to be fiscally sensitive there. So really, the, the biggest ticket item that, you know, is number six, that isn't in our capital improvement program, but as Councilman Ron mentioned, we can certainly have that conversation in another 30 days when we're at the workshop, talk about long-term planning, talk about priorities, things of that nature too. So, that, that might be a, a modified work plan that the council could consider.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron?
Well, yeah, and, no, thank everybody for, for your comments on this. I think we're all on the same page. I mean, I was hoping Luke would present a $10 million check tonight to get all of this done, but absent, yeah, sorry. But absent that, I, I fully expected that this was going to be, you know, some kind of subcommittee that's created and a longer-term commitment by the city. I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the council, we're on the same page here and we wanna, you know, row in the same direction on getting this done, recognizing that some of these items are, are much longer-term than others. Also say with regard to, you know, the current threats and, and risks for the city, we're in a very good position compared to most communities statewide, especially with the work that has just been completed on the south end of town. And the, the work that has been done that, you know, Chief Crater had, had talked about at the, at the last meeting, there's a lot of really good work being done. The lack of having a fully funded and large-scale EOC, I'm, I'm not confident that that's something that the city necessarily needs either. And that's why, you know, all I'm asking for, and I think all the staff report says, is just, let's evaluate the options for, you know, different varieties of EOC to see which one makes the most sense. But even with what we have right now, again, for cities our size, we are still well ahead of the curve when it comes to this. These investments, from my, my perspective, they are, you know, and I said it at the last meeting, it took California 150 years or so of misguided and somewhat bad decision-making to get to where we are today. It's not something we're gonna turn around in two years, but there are some immediate things we can do to reduce our risk in Temecula. And then the long-term stuff, let's just work through that, through this sort of structure of subcommittees and so forth, and come up with some recommendations that are reasonable and fit the character of, of what Temecula actually needs. So I think, you know, across the board, those are, those are the easy wins. And then still, like you said, the, you know, short-term stuff, that low-hanging fruit that we can identify here in the next, you know, six to 12 months, I'm sure we can, you know, all figure those out and bring them back to council pretty quickly for, for approval. And I just, I look forward to hopefully working with the mayor on this.
Perfect. That worked perfectly. Looks like we will talk about this more in the general plan ad hoc subcommittee. And number six, sounds like we'll bring that up at the, the budget hearing, come up here in about 30 days. Do you need any further direction from us on item number 15?
So if we can get a motion, what I heard was, is in addition to receiving and filing the presentation that was made by the deputy city manager, the council is referring the wildfire mitigation work plan to the existing general plan ad hoc subcommittee. And for the last item on the work plan is going to, is going to bring it up during the budget discussions, the upcoming budget discussions. So if we can get a motion and then a vote on that general direction, we can move forward.
Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yeah.
Mayor Kalfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Swank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 16, receive presentation regarding Assembly Bill 306 regarding building regulations and consider adoption of a position at the request of Councilmember Ron. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint presentation. All right. So tonight's agenda item number 16 has to do with Assembly Bill 306. And again, this item is coming at the request of Councilmember Ron. Next slide, please. Just some general information regarding Assembly Bill 306. It was introduced earlier this year in January by Assembly Member Schultz as well as the Speaker Rebus. The, the bill did pass unanimously from Assembly Housing and Community Development, Assembly Appropriations, and the third reading in the House of Origin to the second house. It does have a two-thirds urgency clause. The reason I included this information is to show you that there has been no opposition to date coming out of the House of Origin. Essentially, AB 306 imposes a moratorium on the adoption or modification of any new, any new state and local building standards affecting any residential units from June, from June 1st, 2025 through June 1st, 2031. And it has very limited exceptions to that. Next slide, please. So there are two major provisions in AB 306. And, and I'm not gonna read the whole item there, but essentially what AB 306 does is it says, okay, moving forward, neither local governments nor the state shall go ahead and implement any new building standards specifically related to green building standards for this moratorium period unless they specifically are related to changes necessary as emergency standards to protect health and safety, or they're related to home hardening as identified by the Office of the State Fire Marshal, or they're specifically related to dwelling, certain dwelling units, or they're for, they're related to adapted reuse standards. Next slide, please. The second major provision of the bill also says unless there, the moratorium in regards to green building standards will remain for that moratorium period unless there is those particular exceptions, including emergency standards for health and safety, including home hardening and fire protection-related provisions. Next slide, please. So generally, to date, as I mentioned, this bill has just come out of the House of Origin, so it's come out of the assembly side. It has just gone over to the Senate side. There has been no committee hearings or anything like that on the Senate side yet. Generally speaking, in the House of Origin, there was support from the housing advocates, folks like the California Housing Consortium, and there was opposition from environmental advocates, folks like Climate Action Partners. There has been no formal position taken to date by any government agencies, so cities, counties, special districts. Nobody has taken a, a formal position as of yet. Cal Cities, the League of California Cities, they, the policy committees did hear Assembly Bill 306 last week. The Housing Policy Committee voted to support Assembly Bill 306. Environmental Quality Policy Committee voted to oppose Assembly Bill 306. So very in line with what has been happening on support and opposition from the private side as well. The Cal City, Cities Board, which as you know, I, I sit on, we will consider a final position at our mid-April meeting. I can say, traditionally speaking, when our policy committees have mixed recommendations, if we are not go, if we are going to go with a recommendation that does not match which the, the policy committee is suggesting, it would have to be for a very good reason. Typically speaking, something like this, we may stay on watch. We may stay on, especially since it's early in the, in the second house. Next slide, please. So bottom line is this, this, this particular bill, because it is, it has local control arguments that could go either way for building additional housing, but yet then also having green building standards, formal positions, it did not cleanly fit into our existing legislative platform, which is why it's before you. If the city wanted to take a formal position on the bill, your formal positions are typically support, oppose, support if amended, or oppose unless amended. The city council could also give some general direction. If there is something in the bill right now that does not meet the council's needs or if the council has additional direction, we can certainly go ahead and pursue additional conversations through our state lobbyists with the author's office to go ahead and pursue narrowly tailored amendments, bill language with the author's office. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you for discussion and direction as requested and any additional comments by Councilmember Ron.
Thank you very much for that staff report. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for staff? Do we have any public comments on the matter?
We do not.
With that, I will kick it off to Councilmember Ron, who brought this item forward for discussion.
Yeah, this one's, this one's relatively easy. I'm not recommending that the city take a formal position on this, but having read the bill, I, I, I'm a little concerned about the content and the direction that it could go. And I think it's one of those that we need to watch carefully because of a local control issue and the continual eroding of local control at the state level, but also because of a variety of code councils and similar professional organizations are lining up to oppose this. And I, you know, typically you don't see that sort of activity. And so that, for me, was a red flag. If they're doing that, then there's a reason behind it. And for, for us, I think to take a watch position on this is, is gonna be critical, especially because it doesn't fit neatly under any of our existing ledge platform. So that's why, that's why it's coming up is just, you know, in order to put staff time and legislative time into this, we just needed that approval. And, you know, honestly, it, it's, you know, if I hadn't brought this up, it would have, you know, died as a fairly obscure and seemingly benign bill in most cases, right? But boy, if you love what you do, you pay attention to the boring stuff. And this is one of those that I think could have some pretty serious implications if it's allowed to run without any sort of checks and balances. That's the only reason I'm, I'm bringing it up.
Any of my colleagues have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Swank?
Yeah, I just, so, you know, pardon me, I don't know a, a lot about this other than what I've read in the last couple of weeks. So if we were to take a watch position, you know, or give some direction to staff here or to our advocacy team in Sacramento, what would we want to see out of it? What would be something we would add or take out of it?
Well, right now, it's, right now, nothing, because it's still going through its sort of review and approval process. And so it's good to see that Cal Cities is doing their due diligence on this, and I think we can take a lot of cues from, from their, their hard work in this as well. But, but really from a watch position, it's just, let's keep track of the bill, make sure there aren't any. There's a few language spots that I think are poorly written and, and give a little bit too much leniency and oversight to the State Fire Marshal's office. If you consider something a public safety issue and they don't, then, you know, that ordinance is not allowed. And I think that's just a little bit too much overreach personally. I'd like to see where this language ultimately ends up because there is still a lot of opportunity for, you know, monkeying around with things. And, and that, that's all I'm asking for is just, you know, as it stands, it has some red flags. Let's see where it goes. And then, you know, quite candidly, see where other organizations are as this thing gets more traction. And if there's a swell of opposition, then, you know, it's just something that we should be aware of. And again, I'm not saying we advocate for a position necessarily, but it's just something that we should have on our radar. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is in addition to receiving this presentation, council at this time would like to go ahead and take a watch position, closely monitor the bill and report back any amendments that may occur on the language as it goes through the second house. And those updates and report backs can be via email. Is that fine? Okay. Would you like to make that motion, Councilmember Ron?
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Councilmember Alexander? Mayor Kalfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Swank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right. With that, we will move on to item number 17, receive presentation regarding mail theft legislative efforts and consider regional approach to the same at the request of Councilmember Ron. Can I have a staff report, please, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as legislative director, this one's also mine. We'll pull up the slides. All right, so this is agenda item number 17 regarding mail theft at the request of Councilmember Ron. So this is, the slide before you is just a little recap. We do have existing state and federal law addressing mail theft. We do have existing state and federal law addressing mail theft. Under state law, there's a penal code section that states that every person who commits mail theft, as defined in Section 1708 of the United States Code, which is, refers to the federal law, is guilty of a public offense. And as you can see, is subject to a fine and imprisonment in county jail, not to exceed one year, or both a fine and imprisonment. And then I won't read it all, but as you can see, Section 18, 1708 of Title 18 of the United States Code is also referenced there. It is, actually, the imprisonment is of five years. And there is also a fine under that title as well. Next slide, please. So current efforts by the City of Temecula and Riverside Sheriff's Office. The City of Temecula and Riverside Sheriff's Office, both are providing existing resources to the community to raise awareness of the issue. Mail theft is something that is coming up as an ongoing challenge. And so the City of Temecula and the Riverside Sheriff's Office, they've each created their own websites referring residents on how to report mail theft, vandalism, how to get connected with the United States Postal Service, and other resources related to that. Now, what's happened since the, since Councilmember Ron actually asked for this item to be placed on the agenda itself is the Riverside Sheriff's Office and the United States Postal Inspection Service, they have actually entered into a memorandum of understanding within the last two or three weeks to develop a cooperative effort between local, state, and federal agencies charged with the investigation and prosecution of mail theft and related crimes. So they're really trying to develop strategies at the, at all three levels, local, state, and federal agency, to address this issue. In addition, the city continues to have conversations with local stakeholders, including the Sheriff's Office and Postmaster, to find solutions to challenge related, to challenges related to post office box replacement, lock and key adjustments, et cetera. And then the other thing we did last week, too, is we confirmed with the District Attorney's Office that mail theft crime is, is taken seriously, and it is prosecuted at the local level still. So that is something else that we were able to confirm. Next slide, please. So bottom line is, and the last item is, is that at the legislative level, at the state legislative level, this is not necessarily a legislative priority, and there are no bills pending because that penal code section already is a criminal statute that addresses mail theft. So the recommendation today really is that the City Council go ahead and receive and file this presentation as a status update on the issue. And then if you would like to provide any additional general direction, we're, we're happy to take that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for additional comments by Councilmember Ron as needed.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff? With that, do we have any public comments? With that, I will kick it off to Councilmember Ron to start our discussion.
Okay. So, you know, this is a, first of all, I'm thrilled to see that there's actual activity occurring within both the Sheriff's Department and, and others to enhance enforcement, investigation, prosecution, right? So that, by far, that, that one success right there is a huge step forward. And it's good to see that folks are taking this seriously. The, the one thing that we did hear loud and clear in our earlier conversations with law enforcement and the, and the Postmaster was that prosecutions and all of that really aren't taken all that seriously. And there isn't a lot of that going on, even though we know what's going on and we have repeat offenders. And, and oftentimes, all they do is just simply write a misdemeanor and call it good. Because if you read the, the section of code that, you know, that Randy had provided, it, it allows for that leniency. And, and that's been sort of the status quo for a very long time. And, and I get it, we, you know, overcrowding of jails and punishment and so forth. I understand all of those nuances. But it, none of that ticket writing and, and, you know, slap on the wrist has led to any reductions in, in this type of crime. So, you know, so I'm just saying, no, I don't think enough is being done. And even with this enhancement that we see in the new MOU, we definitely need more activity in, in, in this space. But, but I'll also say that it's not just on, you know, law enforcement and the DA's office to do this. You know, I'd certainly like to continue those conversations with the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department to make sure that we have that enhancement that we're looking for. But, but, but let me be very candid right now and say a few things that probably aren't very polite, which is, you know, we had a great first meeting with the Postmaster, and then we have received no follow-up responses to any requests for information or communication from that same office since. And correct me if I'm wrong there, but as of, as of now, we have not received a single response back. Now, I understand the federal government is going through a bit of upheaval and, and things are changing quite rapidly. I understand that completely. However, they still have a job to do. And ignoring requests by the City of Temecula, it's unconscionable. Especially when, how often do we actually contact them and try to have any conversation with their office? Especially about an issue that it impacts arguably most residents of the city. I can't imagine there isn't, you know, but a handful of folks left in Temecula who have been, you know, not impacted by this crime. That, to me, is extremely frustrating. What's also frustrating is the, the response when we talked about why are the post, you know, especially the large post, post boxes that HOAs and all of that have, why are they being broken into so frequently? It's because the locks are terrible, and they're easy to break into. And the response was, well, the old locks used to be a lot better. Okay. Why aren't we putting, bringing back the old locks? And we find out there's only one lock company in the entire United States that makes these, which is why it takes six months to get a lock replaced in the first place. Because there's only one company in the whole country. And then if we want to go back to the old lock or some other version, it literally takes an act of Congress to get that done. Again, that's a ridiculous situation to put a city in. And the lack of response by the Postmaster is just frustrating that even further. So what I would like from this conversation tonight is to continue the conversations with Riverside Sheriff's Department and their MOU. Also, you know, confirm, you know, sort of those priorities with the District Attorney's Office and have that conversation with them as well. And then I would say lean heavily on Representative Isa's office because they were in the room while all this was being said. And there was some, you know, pretty, pretty clear, you know, direction, I think, that we could give them and that they recognize, you know, that this is a priority, not just for this district, but nationally as well. And why, you know, Temecula should be spearheading this, you know, national initiative on mailbox locks is just beyond me. This should have been solved a long time ago. But if it takes reaching out to, you know, Congressman Isa's office to get this done, then, then so be it. The last thing, too, is what I mentioned during the conversation on wildfire risk is, you know, our community has a lot of opportunity to take care of this themselves. Let me be clear, I'm not saying vigilantism. What I'm saying, Peter, he's just like, Matt, stop. So what I am saying, however, is that our HOAs and those folks who have direct control of their mailboxes can do what they think is most appropriate for hardening those, including putting their own locks or own security or own cages or whatever it is around there, so long as they provide access to the postal service and provide them with a key or whatever, enhancing security, enhancing lighting, maybe it's the location, maybe there's a whole variety of factors. But I would like to make sure that at some point in the very near future, we get that sort of list of things that, that can be done and provide that to those HOAs. And then the last piece is, let's just make sure we're coordinating this with our neighbor to the north in Marietta because what I don't want to have happen, and I know that Councilmember Stone and I have, have talked at length about this, and she's interested in very, very much the same issue, is that, you know, one or the other city goes down a path where we get very aggressive about this, start solving this, this, this issue, and just kind of push all the crime into the other community. We don't need that to happen. We should be coordinating and, and make sure that we do a lot of outreach and, and all that together. So, anyway, those are my big issues on this one. And that's all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. I was gonna basically say a lot of what you just said in the second half, that there is, because I live in a neighborhood where we have individual mailboxes. And, you know, the old days when you, kid would drive by with a baseball bat and knock it. That happened a lot in our neighborhood until people started hardening that mailbox. And we built structures around our mailbox, or we put a steel pole right in front of the mailbox. So when they went to swing, they went ding, you know? So, so, but I, I think there is some level of personal responsibility that comes with the whole mailbox situation. Because I know, in my shopping center, Palomar Village, we had an old mailbox, you know, the big, the big one, you know, where we are. But it was super thin metal. And so they just literally just peeled the back off. And so the next one we got is thicker metal, metal. And it would be, it would take a really lot to, to peel that thing off. So, so I think there's ways to harden those mailboxes to where, you know, it's, it's not as easy for them to take advantage of us because that's really what they're doing. They're just picking the easy targets, you know? They go for the soft target. They don't go for something that's really going to be hard to do. And so I, I think that's something an HOA especially can look into is purchasing really heavy-duty steel-type mailboxes. Because a lot of times, not going in through the lock, they're just literally peeling the back off. So that's what I was going to suggest, too, that I think there's a lot of opportunity for HOAs and just regular citizens who have, you know, the multi-boxes to harden them themselves because it is a huge inconvenience. If you've ever been to our Temecula post office and seen the line of people trying to get their mail because their mailboxes have been destroyed and they can't be used anymore. And, I mean, it's 40 people deep. I mean, I've been in there and I've seen it go all the way to the back of the, the post office. So it's like, you know, I think for a short-term fix, everybody needs to start putting on their thinking cap and figuring out, how can we harden it ourselves rather than relying on the federal government, which we know that's a mistake? So, you know, do it yourself and, and try to get your association involved to, to create those really hard targets that the bad guys are going to go, I've tried that one before, you know? And keep them, keep them at bay that way. So that's my thought.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so much like Councilmember Stewart, our neighborhood has the, the old-timey, you know, mailboxes, individual mailboxes. And, you know, every once in a while, they'll be opened up. And, and you can even buy some that have locks, and, and they end up just breaking the locks. But you've seen some residents that have taken that extra step, right? And they, they harden it. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there for individual residents, especially, you know, with the single ones and then HOAs with the, with the multi, multi-home boxes or the larger boxes. One thing I think we need to think about if we're thinking, you know, about the future is future development and what are some of the requirements for future development? And what does that look like? You know, are there better options out there, you know, for, which I'm confident there are, right? So those are things we should think about. And then on the slide, it said something about feedback that we deem appropriate, I think it was the language. My biggest gripe with the post office is their landscape maintenance. So I deem it appropriate that we, we have them fix their landscape something other than just weeds, like, come on, let's have some pride of ownership around here. Thanks.
I would agree with my colleagues. I think, like we said, is relying on the federal government to fix a local issue, it's not going to happen. And I was in the meeting with, you know, Congressman Isa's office and Councilmember Ron. And as much as they try to change and influence policy at the federal level, we know how hard that's going to be at the state level and especially at the local level. And what we can do is, is like my colleague said, is harden the mailboxes that you have in your communities today. In a local community that, in District 3, Crown Hill, they've put up flock cameras, for instance, so they have cameras throughout the entire neighborhood. They're looking to put in lighting on the mailboxes. Anything that we can do to deter the criminals from breaking into the mailboxes is, you know, in my mind, the best way to do this, right? You have to be proactive instead of reactive. And, and changing the locks that the, the federal government approves, that, that's likely never to happen. And it's, it's a hard, a hard, a hard sell there. So I think working with the HOAs, working with local communities, working with our regional partners in Marietta, just to our north, is definitely much needed. So I agree with my colleagues there. If we want to get a clear motion here, we can have the Madam City Clerk either repeat. I can, I can try here. I think the first one was to receive and file the presentation. Councilmember Ron stated he wanted to continue the conversation with the RSOs, the DA's office, as well as Congressman Isa's office, and, as well as collaborate with our HOAs and let them know, you know, what they can do to harden their mailboxes. And lastly, collaborate with our partners to the north in Marietta. Does that sound perfect?
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what I have on my list.
Love that. Councilmember Ron, if you would like to make that motion?
I will move that.
I'll second it.
That has been moved and seconded.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Kalfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously?
All right. With that, before we move on, I'd just like to say, Councilmember Ron, thank you for bringing these items up. I think they're all extremely important. The evacuation plans, the wildfire mitigation, the local control for housing, the mail theft. I think they can all become, you know, kind of lost in the weeds if we don't bring these up to the public. And I think they're all extremely important issues. So I appreciate you bringing those up.
Thanks. I appreciate the support on these. And then I also promised the City Manager's Office that I'll slow down a little bit. I know it's been a couple of years, so I'm just, I'm just catching up.
He's picking up right where he left off here. Item number 18. Consider pilot program for community education and distribution of Narcan at the request of Mayor Protem Alexander. Can I have a staff report, please, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, you can, Mr. Mayor. Let's give Councilmember Ron and Randy a little break from their reports. Item 18 is to consider the topic of a pilot community Narcan education and distribution program, and at the request of Mayor Protem Alexander. The goal of this item is to integrate Narcan education into the City of Temecula's training programs, but also to be able to firmly state to each Temecula parent, resident, business coach, teacher, and employee that public safety and life safety issues, in particular, have and will always be the top priority in this community. Next slide. Here are some uncomfortable facts. According to the CDC, synthetic opioids like fentanyl are the primary driver of overdose deaths in the United States. More than 107,000 people lost their lives to drug overdose in 2023, with nearly 70% of those deaths attributed to opioids such as fentanyl. Now, the latest DEA laboratory testing announced in the fall of 2024 indicates that five out of 10 pills tested contain a potentially deadly dose of fentanyl. Two milligrams of fentanyl are considered a lethal dose. And for perspective, one gram of fentanyl is equivalent to the size of a sugar packet and has the potential to kill up to 500 people. Let me repeat that. This packet right here of fentanyl can kill up to 500 people. That's what we're talking about here. Between January and December 2024, authorities seize approximately 21,000 pounds of fentanyl at the U.S. borders. That is 16% less than had been seized by the same point in 2023. There is significant risk that illegal drugs have been intentionally contaminated with fentanyl. Now, as the City Council and community heard recently at the March 11 Council meeting from the heartbreaking account by Matt Capelluto regarding his daughter Alexandra, it is possible for someone to take a pill without knowing it contains fentanyl. It is also possible to take a pill knowing it contains fentanyl, but with no way of knowing it contains a lethal dose. Because of its potency and low cost, drug dealers have been mixing fentanyl with other drugs, including heroin, methamphetamines, and cocaine. And this is increasing the likelihood of fatal interaction. Next slide. Naloxone is a lifesaving medication used to reverse an opioid overdose, including heroin, fentanyl, and prescription opioid medications. Naloxone can be quickly given through nasal spray, which is better known as Narcan. Narcan is safe and easy to use, works almost immediately, and is not addictive. Narcan has very few negative effects and has no effect if opioids are not in a person's system. Indeed, another important and timely tool for a public safety toolbox. Next slide, please. What about liability? Well, in addition to the support and approval of Temecula's police and fire chiefs and our city attorney, who are critically aware of the risks in not pursuing this effort, the California Get's Merit-in-Law protects persons who give Narcan and makes Narcan more readily available. A person cannot be liable for any civil damages that result from his or her providing of emergency care. of emergency care if the person acted in good faith and not for compensation, the person provided either emergency medical care or non-medical care, and the care was provided at the scene of an emergency. Next slide. So here's the type of training module that's being developed. Participants will learn how opioids affect the body, the signs and symptoms of an opioid overdose, and step-by-step instructions for administering Narcan safely and effectively. This initiative would complement the existing life safety courses offered by the city's fire department to the community, such as CPR training. Prior to the community education and training implementation, fire and HR risk management staff will provide city staff, who have an identified field and public interaction role, with an opportunity to be trained and obtain Narcan, Narcan as well. This is the pilot program. Next slide, please. Staff has also identified a fiscally responsible and reliable source in Narcan through a community program, Riverside University Health Systems, that allows the city and local law enforcement agencies to obtain Narcan in bulk for free, specifically for community distribution and training. Next slide. Finally, with city council approval, Temecula continues our commitment to the following core values: safe and prepared community, and an accountable and responsive city government. Excellent. Unless there are any questions before returning back to the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, please let me know how we can respond. And thank you.
Thank you very much for that staff report. Any questions of staff or my colleagues? Councilmember Ron?
Just a, a quick one. I know we had talked a little bit about the expiration dates with, with Narcan, that it's roughly three years or so from date. What about storage? So if we're talking about, you know, folks carrying this in, you know, their supply bags or vehicles or whatever, are there any concerns about, you know, heat issues, cold, you know, whatever it is that affects the viability of the dosage? Do we know anything about that?
Go ahead.
So I had a really good, that's a great question. And one of the things, I had a great conversation today with Michael today, just looking a little bit deeper on some of these types of questions. So this is why we want to have that community outreach, to be able to answer questions like that, like where to leave this, how to do this, what to do, what not to do, what to be prepared for when this happens, when you administer Narcan to somebody that, you know, some people just think, hey, just let's press a button. And it's not just pressing a button. So I love the question. I don't have a direct answer for that, but those are some of the questions that Michael seems to either know where to find the information or is going to research. So if we can maybe take note of that, that would be another great question to answer.
In addition to, for any of our supplies, we're not going to expose them to any extreme conditions. Initially, we're looking at maybe a supply of about 240 to 250, and it'll be in climate-controlled conditions. Again, as we're going through our initial training program, those are some of the logistics and things that will work out. But it's pretty standard with any medical equipment or any resources that we're, we're providing or storage.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on this agenda item?
We do not.
All right. I will kick it off to Mayor Pro Tem Alexander to start our discussion.
All right. Well, first off, again, thanks to staff for your time and consideration. Thank you, council, for allowing me to bring this forward. Obviously, this is an issue not just within our, our region, but nationwide. And, you know, three words that came out to me as I wanted to propose this to our city council here is three things that we all stand on is safety, public education, and resources. And that's something I think all five of us can get behind. And if we want to push this initiative forward to prepare our community, I know it's going to have lifesaving effects. It's going to allow parents, community, businesses, schools, even here at the city, to be prepared for when there is an incident of Narcan, whether somebody has taken something and they didn't know it was in there, or maybe they took some type of fentanyl and, and they're laying there and we don't know what's going on. So I want to take a look at this as number one for safety, as we're going to save lives. Two, we can educate on how to administer and also how to intervene in situations that we're going to come up upon. I mean, even as a, you know, former public safety police officer, this is all new. Right now, I can say that in my arena of work, this was one of the things that came up, is, is we wanted to start bringing Narcan to our jobs because we work with people who are taking drugs. And so we need to be ready and prepared for that for when they walk in there, in case either we have a staff member or a client go down. What does that look like as far as a business here? Again, I talked to staff and they brought some great ideas. It's like, hey, let's do a, a pilot program here and see how that can help our staff and looking at putting it all within the AEDs, the boxes, so we're prepared here in case there's a situation. So these are some of those conversations to have. I love the fact that the financial impact is very minimal. It would be coming from either the, the state or the county, I believe. We have a lot of resources, so we're not being financially liable in that sense. So the biggest thing, when I was talking to Michael, the two areas that we will more or less have a fiscal impact is going to be bringing it up just through community outreach and then documentation. That's kind of what we're looking at. So he's going to look down the road, but that's to minimal as staff continues to look a little deeper into this and move forward. The program, it sounds like right now would be about an hour. It would be an in-person with the, the fire, the fires, the fire station. And they are wanting to come back sometime around mid-year to have the program finalized and pushed out and ready even for city to see how, how effective it is. So I'm just bringing it to all of you to see if this is something we want to do to continue to safeguard our community, to prepare families in case something goes down, and allow people to feel safe, even when they don't always feel that they're in that kind of a situation, to feel safe. So that is what I'm proposing.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I do think this is a great idea. I mean, this is, this is kind of like the new CPR. You know, we're, we're dealing with an epidemic of fentanyl out there that, and, and a lot of people don't even realize they're taking it when they're taking it. And so to have someone collapse in front of you, like you said, it would really be nice to have some sort of training behind that to understand, okay, that's what they described would happen if someone, you know, was reacting to a fentanyl overdose. So I, I think it's a great idea. I think we shouldn't, we should do this. I like your idea. We should know all the specs because if we're going to give this to, you know, certain groups that are, you know, out and about, does heat react to it differently? Does, you know, cold? Does, who knows? And so it would be great to get all that information, and we would. So I'm not worried about that. So it's, but I, I do think this is, this is going to be training everybody should have and know how to do going forward because fentanyl isn't going anywhere. And so, so I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. If I can just add also, tomorrow, we have it on the agenda to actually be bringing this into the schools as well. That was kind of one of my things is, let's take a look at the group that's, that's really encountering it. And our, our youth, our parents, I want to be able to make sure that they are well-informed. So the conversation is going to move forward of how we're doing things and how then the school themselves can also be administering a program similar to this or in conjunction.
Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you very much. So it's really difficult to listen to the Capelluto family over the years and hear the horrific stories and not try to do everything humanly possible to make an impact and reduce fentanyl deaths in, you know, obviously not just our community, but in the United States. And this is one step. This is one concrete step that will make a dramatic impact, I think. You know, per the CDC, we are seeing a slight rate decrease from 22 to 23. It went down 2.2 percentage points. It's not a lot of percentage points, but it's a lot of people, right? And I think, so having that available, I think is important. I like that you brought up the idea of the schools. I think we need to also collaborate with Mount San Seno, Cal State San Marcos. There are, there are vending machines now on many college/university campuses that, you know, students can tap their, you know, card and, and essentially be vended Narcan, right, to, to have it, right? I don't think we're there. I don't think that's what, what we're trying to do here. But having it readily available, I think, is important. The community education component is extremely important, so I like that. Yeah, I, I just think it's, you know, overall, it's just a really good, a good idea and a good plan. I also like the, the, the idea, the possibility that it will reduce like the stigma of this, right? We heard, we've heard Matt over the years talk about the stigma of like, people will say, well, you know, this child or this, this person died, they were a drug addict, right? Like, well, that's not true. So the more we can do on the community outreach side to help on that front as well, I think is important. But, but in the end, we're going to save lives and that's, that's all I care about. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron?
No, I, thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is a real important part of what's going to help our community and, and reduce that risk. Are we contemplating targeting other business establishments and, and other folks in town for this training and access?
That was my goal, is because I, I want the outreach to be within the community itself. So I think what it sounds like right now, we're going to pilot it here, see how it goes, see how staff likes it, and then be able to build from there. So videos, different things, different options. And now that Michael's kind of got full reins on this, he is, he's, he's sprinting. It was, it was exciting to see him really take, take the reins on it. So this is kind of a little new to him as well, but it just got put into his bucket, so.
Because it would, I think, also benefit if we reached out. Obviously, you know, there's some, some high-risk locations potentially in town. But I, I would imagine that law enforcement has a pretty good track record of, and, and Cal Fire would too, of, of where the overdoses and exposures are happening. So, you know, being able to tap into that, that data to help identify locations that are high-risk and, and help bring them into this would be critical. But also, I, I would also add, and I honestly have no idea what their programs are, but reaching out to our, our neighbors at Pachanga as well.
Absolutely. And one of the things is also just making sure that we're in with the hospital as well. You know, it's all of these communities. How can we be resourcing from each other to just get the word out? But I like that idea, especially with the tribe. That's something I don't think we even had that conversation with. So maybe we did, maybe we didn't.
No, we haven't directly. Again, we were looking for support and concurrence. Councilmember, you, you talked about police and what their experience is, as well as fire. They utilize Narcan. They were part of the whole working group. And when we were trying to gauge whether or not this was a useful tool, every person there said, of course, when, when, when the Mayor Pro Tem kind of mentioned wanting to go forward with this, and we work on a lot of projects here as your professional staff too, but sometimes there's a topic, sometimes there's a project where all of us just say, yeah, this is needed or it makes sense and why not? One of the reasons also, starting with, with the city workforce too, is that we are engaged in the community. We interact. Those kids that were here, they go, go to our community centers. They're in our programs, right? You know, so it's, it's one of those reasons. You know, our field crews, which will also be targeted, they're the ones that are driving the streets and they're cleaning up certain areas, right? We want to make sure that they're equipped. And then we'll work out the kinks, if there are any questions or whatnot. But a lot of our city staff are residents too, right? So we want to make sure that we, we refine this. It sounds like we're well on our way. And then after that, we'll roll it out to the community and, and continue to make a difference, a difference that needs to be made. And looking forward to our leadership on this. So, so thank you truly for your support.
No, thank you. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for bringing this forward. I know we discussed this, you know, bringing it to all city-owned buildings last year in our Public Safety Subcommittee. So to see this come to fruition is, is definitely necessary for our community to be ready and prepped. And I think the, the, there's a few things about fentanyl where, at, at first, it's scary, right? You hear fentanyl, you hear overdose. The, the few things about Narcan and fentanyl poisoning, there's a few, I guess avenues, not positive, but it's easily recognizable, right? When, when we do the community outreach and we do the training, it's easily recognizable to see someone who is experiencing an opioid overdose, right? Their, their pupils are going to be pimple or pinpoint. They're not going to have adequate respiration, so they're not breathing enough. They're breathing less than six times a minute, and there's a possibility of drug use. And that's really the criteria to administer Narcan. And it is as simple as, as pressing a, a plunger into the, you know, the individual's nose, and then that essentially reverses the effect of the opioid. So the community outreach is going to be huge because it is scary to talk about it first. But as soon as you recognize the need to administer Narcan, it all becomes much, much easily recognizable and simpler. And I think an important part about this and an important education piece is the Good Samaritan Law. A lot of people who are with someone that's, that is experiencing an overdose are afraid to call 911 with the fear that they're going to be in trouble for the, the drugs that are on scene. But the Good Samaritan Law essentially protects them. It's, it's not a all-of-a-car protection, but it's a limited protection for low-level, you know, if you have a low-level amount of drugs, you'll be protected by calling 911 and being that Good Samaritan to, you know, give the individual medical attention. So if you are with someone, you know, this is for the, the high school kids out there or anyone else, the adults, if you are with someone that is experiencing a drug overdose, do not be afraid to call 911 to get them the help that is needed because the Good Samaritan Law, again, provides that limited protection for you under the law. But I think overall, this is a great initiative. I'm excited to see the pilot program roll out. And again, I thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for bringing this forward. And I'm looking forward to, to seeing it happen.
Thank you. If I could just throw one nugget, so in case anybody ever, this isn't something that I actually learned from our own Captain Pearson, is if you do administer, in case you don't hear anything else, if you do administer Narcan, take a step back. Take a couple steps back because they can end up waking up abruptly and kind of in that rage mode. And something I never even thought about. You know, a lot of times we want to stay right on top of them and, and just check out their vital things like that. But it's one of those, take a step back, let everything work. So these are the reasons exactly why we want to make sure that these things get taught and administered and pushed forward. So I appreciate the support of the council. So I would like to bring that for number 18, the considered top, consideration topic of a pilot program for Narcan to the community of education and distribution.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Kalfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Pass this unanimously.
All right. With that passing unanimously, we will move on to number 19, receive recommendations related to the Old Town events and road closures and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of the Subcommittee with Councilmember Schwank and Councilmember Stewart. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, indeed. So Tracy Tominez is going to come up and give you all a staff report on the outcome of the Subcommittee meeting. Just as a quick refresher, because this item has come before various iterations of different bodies here in the city several times. The issue first came before you, Mayor, and also TCSD President Schwank. Back in January, there was some discussion about the impacts to the community of road closures associated with TCSD or city events here in Old Town. And following some discussion, it was then recommended that we take it before OTLAC and the Community Services Commission. It went before the Community Services Commission in February, and, oh, OTLAC also later in February. And then we took the results of those discussions to counsel in, on March 11th. It was then referred to the Community Services Subcommittee, where we had a very, very extensive discussion, I think, two hours, 45 minutes. And Tracy has put together the culmination of all of that input in encapsulating the recommendations here for you today.
Thank you, Erica. So as she had mentioned, we've kind of gone through several presentations bringing us to this. So just to give a reminder, our original road closures for the year for our events taking place in Old Town came out to 78.5 days. Based on the council motion on the March 11th meeting, it brought us to 31. You may notice that's a slightly different number. The reason for that is in my original presentation, the events and road closures focused specifically on events when Mercedes Street was closed. With the rod run, Mercedes Street does remain open, but I wanted to include that for tonight's presentation to give you that true number, which is 31. So with this, you can see some of the recommendations for the events with either changing them, relocating, or eliminating entirely, which brings us to 31 days. After that meeting, we were directed to bring this item to the Parks and Rec Subcommittee with the goal of getting the total number of road closures under 20. So throughout my presentation, I'll share an overview of the events, staff recommendations, and Subcommittee recommendations. Then at the end, I can share an overview of what number we're looking at now. So to begin, we have the Community Services Expo that's scheduled for Saturday, April 26. Some of the staff recommendations were to either allow this event to remain at the Civic Center, host at Ronald J. Parks Community Recreation Center, or at a city park if the recreation center was unavailable. Subcommittee recommendation was to have this event remain at the Civic Center. So with this, the road closures would be a closure on Friday for setup of the canopies, temporarily reopening Mercedes Street for that Friday evening, and then in that Saturday morning, having it close from about 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. for the event itself. And then in that Saturday morning, having it close from about 7:00 AM until 4:00 PM for the event itself. With Rod Run, no changes were recommended at this time. So with that, Old Town Front Street and the side streets will be closed on Friday, May 2nd for the cruise from approximately 4:00 to 8:30 PM. And then Saturday for the show and shine from about 4:30 AM until 5:00 PM. Continuing with the spring, we have Culture Fest scheduled for May 17th. With this event, staff recommendations included either remaining at the Civic Center Quad or downsizing and relocating to Sam Hicks Monument Park. With the discussion on this event, it was decided or recommended to remain at the Civic Center Quad with the suggestion of shortening the timeframe from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM to 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. With this event, we do have our entertainment lineup already booked for the event. After I'd come out of Subcommittee, it did have the entire lineup provided, which has a pretty tight schedule of maintaining the event from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So if council would like, we can either see if any adjustments can be made for this year's event or consider this for moving forward in the future, having the event just simply be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. With this event, the road closures, road to close at 5:30 AM and depending on the ending of the event, reopen at about 5:00 or 6:00 PM as soon as all of our vendors have cleaned up their canopies. As we head into the summer, one of the recommendations that was approved at the March 11th council meeting was to relocate the Juneteenth Celebration to Sam Hicks Monument Park. And with that, we just wanted to have a further conversation to see what the direction of this event for the future would look like. So moving forward, we plan to incorporate this with the June Culture Day event. So it would remain at Sam Hicks Monument Park with no road closures associated with it. With the Summer Concert Series, staff and Subcommittee agreed to continue with this event remaining at the Civic Center Quad in conjunction with the Sunset Market. That way it wouldn't have any additional road closures. With the Fourth of July Parade, staff did throw out the crazy recommendation of eliminating it and allocating our funds and resources to the extravaganza at the sports park. At this time, Subcommittee recommended no changes. So with that, the road closure would be on Mercedes Street and on Old Town Front Street from approximately 6:00 AM to noon. As we head into the fall with the Health and Preparedness Fair, staff and Subcommittee made the recommendation of combining the Health Fair and Preparedness Fair for this year and evaluating the success of the combined event. That way we can reassess for 2026 if this has been a success combining the two or if we need to look at some other changes. So with this event, the road closure would be on Mercedes Street, starting at 8:00 AM that Friday for setup, reopening Mercedes Street once all the canopies are set. And then that Saturday morning, close once again and then reopen by about 6:00 PM. With this event, since the event itself is from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and we have canopies that we rent, it can take some time to break them all down. So 6:00 PM would be the latest. But with an event like this, we could look at having our canopy vendor set up within the road closure of the Main Street wide. That way we could safely have Mercedes Street open while they're continuing to break down all of the items. With Cartoonapalooza Art Festival, staff had a few recommendations of either allowing this event to remain at the Civic Center Quad, transitioning to an indoor event at the Ronald J. Park CRC or eliminating the event and allocating funds and resources to our monthly art walk. The Subcommittee recommendation was to have this event remain at the Civic Center Quad. However, we would shorten the time of the event from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM to 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Again, with this event, we do have closures on Friday for the canopy setup with that temporary reopening of Mercedes Street on Friday evening. With this event, moving forward, if we continue to have it at the Civic Center and we end at 3:00 PM, the road would be able to reopen by 6:00 PM. With Ride the Vines, which is our cosponsored event with Bike Temecula Valley Coalition, they originally had proposed to have their vendor expo in front of City Hall. Staff and Subcommittee made the recommendation of relocating the vendor expo to Epperson Parking Lot with this, since they did mention that they'll be planning to have their after-party at Bailey's. It seems like a good fit, especially with their route the past few years. They've kind of primarily started on Santiago to Ynez. So being at the Epperson Lot would allow little closer access to the start of their ride. With the Halloween Carnival, staff and Subcommittee made the recommendation to remain at the Civic Center Quad. For this event, it's just a one-day closure of Mercedes from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The Patriotic Salute to Veterans, staff had recommended kind of offering a refresh of this event entirely. So with that, typically we hold it on the holiday. Staff is recommending we host it on the Saturday prior to Veterans Day. Some of the options for this event could have been to host it as a standalone concert at the CRC Amphitheater or Sam Hicks Monument Park or transitioning to a Veterans Expo at a city park. Subcommittee recommendation was to continue to remain at the Civic Center Quad, but move forward with a refresh of the event by having more of a Veterans Expo and barbecue. Kind of have an opportunity for our community to come together, meet other veterans, learn about those resources while enjoying a nice meal. So with that, the idea would be to have it on Saturday, November 8th, approximately 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'd like to look into other neighboring veterans events, just to make sure there's no conflict. With that, if we were to go with a 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM timeframe, the road closure duration would be about 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. With our last fall event, we have Puesca Mountain Day. With this, staff and Subcommittee recommendation was to have it remain at the Civic Center Quad based on an approximate time for this year, since it will be taking place on a Saturday. You estimate the event time running from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, Mercedes Street would be closed from approximately 1:00 to 9:00 PM. With our winter events, we have Santa's Electric Light Parade. At this time, no changes were recommended for the parade route. The road closure duration for Old Town would be Mercedes Street closed from approximately 7:00 to 10:00 PM once the parade starts and then Old Town Front Street closed also from about 6:00 to 11:00 PM. Moving on with the New Year's Eve Grape Drop. At this time, staff and Subcommittee recommend remaining at the Civic Center Quad. Since in the past, we've had this event in conjunction with the ice skating rink, this would now just be about a one-day road closure. So we would anticipate closing Mercedes Street at 10:00 AM that day. This year, New Year's Eve falls on a Tuesday. So it would be 10:00 AM on Tuesday until about 1:00 AM that Wednesday. The main cleanup with this event is having our band kind of clean up all of their equipment from the front steps of City Hall. Then if we have the grapes on display, making sure those are safely out of the way. So depending on timeframe of taking that down, about 12:00 AM, 1:00 AM. Then with our year-round event, we have the Temecula Sunset Market, which as of right now, it's scheduled for the second and fourth Thursday of the month, running from March through November from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Staff recommendations included remaining twice a month, but possibly shortening the duration from May to August until September or September. With the Subcommittee recommendation, they agreed to remain twice a month. However, they suggested shortening the duration from May to October. They also considered adjusting the event time from 5:00 to 9:00 to 4:00 to 8:00, but that would be another conversation. With that, with the current timeframe of the event, the road closure duration would be 12:00 to 10:00 PM that Thursday. So on this slide, I know it's a lot of numbers again. So with the, our original closures, it had 78.5. Based on the council motion on March 11th, it brought us to 31. Based on the outcome of the Subcommittee meeting on April 2nd, it brought us to 25. And then on my next slide, I did want to kind of just highlight the weekdays that it would be taking place. So with 25 being that number of closures throughout the year, if you look at our weekday closures, it brings us to 13. So that primarily includes the Temecula Sunset Market. I have the Sunset, Summer Concert Series listed in there as, as five, but since those are included with the Sunset Market, it still keeps us at 13. Fourth of July Parade and New Year's Eve Grape Drop, since we do host those on the holidays, the day of the week does vary. However, with our other events, on the last column, that would be 12 Fridays and Saturdays of closures. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions or refer back to any slides.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
So this is a question and also for clarification. The one of those Friday to Saturday events is Puesca Mountains on your category.
Yes, oh, thank you.
And that's a floating holiday. So it could be a Monday next, next year, Tuesday, when, you know. So, so I don't think we should count that one into the, the category of Friday to Saturday because it's a floater.
Right. Thank you.
I have a few questions that could be for staff, but also my colleagues in the Subcommittee. For a couple of the events that happen on, take place on Saturdays, I'll start off with the, the Health Fair and Preparedness Fair. You know, the last Council meeting that we discussed this, I mentioned possibly partnering with the hospital who also put on a health fair, an expo at the hospital where they had, you know, a petting zoo and they had a bunch of vendors there and they have ample amount of, you know, parking and room. Have we thought about, and I'm sure, I mean, you guys first off spoke for over two and a half hours, which is, I thank you for that. But partnering with them and, and I guess relieving that Saturday and day and a half of road closures.
Yes. The topic of the Health and Preparedness Fair did come up. And with that, we did reference the health fair that the hospital puts on themselves. So one of the recommendations with that would be to continue to partner with the Temecula Valley Hospital and also work with some of the vendors that they have at their event and kind of bring them to our event as well, just to kind of continue to have that same crowd. There are a lot of vendors that I've heard that haven't participated in the city's event before. So that was the topic that came up. However, as far as partnering with, just working with their event rather than hosting our own, we did not discuss that. We wanted to kind of continue with the combination of the Health and Preparedness Fair and see if that increases our attendance and then evaluate for next year. If it seems that the hospital is continuing to have more attendance than the city health fair, then that's something we would consider.
Okay. Yeah, just from my perspective, I feel like the, the hospitals' health fair and our health fairs are pretty similar. They did theirs, you know, almost bigger than ours with the petting zoo and they had, I think they had more vendors. So looking at, you know, partnering with them and, and they also have, you know, no street closures, more parking and making it, you know, an overall better event for the entire community. And another one that I'm looking into on a Saturday, the Community Services Expo. You know, the city of Temecula invests tens of millions of dollars into our recreation centers, all of our parks across the city. One of the, you know, people talk about most is all the beautiful parks. Is the, the Community Services Expo, is that something that we've thought about? We're freeing up that Saturday in front of City Hall when we know that there's already a, a traffic and parking issue on Saturdays. Looking at, you know, the MRC, for instance, we just opened, you know, tens of millions of dollars goes into that. CRC, again, all of the parks that we had, looking into possibly doing that expo at one of the parks or recreation centers that we have in our city.
So we did have a lot of discussion on that and I'll defer to your colleagues if they want to kind of add on to that. That kind of kick-started the meeting and that was kind of the first one where we did have some ideas from both sides. So Councilmember Stewart had recommended hosting it at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park since we do have a lot of amenities offered there. However, since a lot of our classes don't, they don't all take place at parks, Councilmember Schwank had mentioned that having the event here in Old Town, it's kind of the heart of Temecula and it's an opportunity for the community to come together. So that way it's a chance to kind of showcase all of the things we offer rather than just maintaining at a park. So while that is something we could look into if directed to, at the time of the Subcommittee, it was recommended to remain at the Civic Center.
Okay. And lastly, the Cartoonapalooza. I saw that the staff recommended possibly taking those funds and moving it into the monthly art walk, which is on a Friday and Saturday, which would not cause any street closures, to my knowledge. I guess just what was the reasoning behind deciding to keep the Cartoonapalooza in front of City Hall rather than investing in our art walk?
So with Cartoonapalooza, it was recommended to continue hosting it, well, one, hosting it as an event rather than eliminating it entirely because it is an opportunity to engage with our younger demographic. We do have, that's one of the events out of all of our Community Service Department events that does attract some of those younger adults. So that was the main reason why we, one, wanted to continue with that event. And then, two, just with kind of, again, the ambiance of Old Town. So while staff did recommend that we could relocate it, it was at the direction of Subcommittee to remain at the Civic Center Quad.
Absolutely. Would you say the age demographic, for those that attend the Cartoonapalooza are the same age demographic that attend the art walk?
I would say with art walk, we do have some of the younger adults, but then we do have older. Whereas with Cartoonapalooza, it's specifically kind of that tween teenager and early twenties. And so while we do get some of that at art walk, we also kind of go into our older demographic at that event.
That makes sense. Thank you very much. Any other questions from my colleagues? Do we have any public comments on this matter? All right. With that, I will kick it off to the Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kick it off to the Subcommittee for further discussion.
Yeah, thank you very much. Tracy, thanks for the presentation again. And, and yeah, we, we spent quite a lot of time in Subcommittee talking about this. We thought, well, we blocked an hour and a half and we were there like two hours and 45 or something like that. We essentially just went, you know, event by event and kind of talked it through. I think, you know, the, the theme that maybe I'll try to convey tonight with some of this, and I appreciate Tracy answering some of the questions that were maybe more directed to the Subcommittee on the reasonings why. But I wanted to put up just a quick photograph. So I think we have a slide from, this is from 2009 when, before the City Hall facility was built, Town Square Park was built before that. And so you can see the ice rink here with people enjoying this. And then in the backdrop, and, and that's my wife and our very young daughter skating at the, at the ice rink there. But in the backdrop, you see City Hall. Like, it's not even built yet, which is, was a trip. I was, I didn't have this on my smartphone because I don't even think I had a smartphone at that time. So I had to go to my computer and I was scrolling through, you know, old photos and whatnot. But sort of thinking about the way that we think about community is important. And my wife and I moved up here in 2001 and started our life here, right? Started our family here. This didn't exist in 2001 and we'd come to Old Town and there wasn't anything going on down here. We'd go to Rosa's Cantina, which I miss roses, by the way. And that was it, right? There wasn't a lot. And, and we didn't know like, well, is this, is this community long-term for us? Like, what, what is going to happen? It wasn't but a couple of years later that my aunt and uncle, they moved up here. They kind of came up here and they saw the, the possibilities in Old Town. So the Dalton Building was being built and they're like, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna move our business from San Diego and we're going to come up here. And, and so they sort of saw that vision, that Old Town specific plan. And if you, if you read that document, it's pretty visionary. And, and I had read it over the years just because I liked those things. I know there's a gentleman in the audience, a couple that like those sorts of documents. But I, but when I, when I first got elected, I started sifting through it even more. And, and if you actually, if you look in our hallway where our council offices are, there's a bunch of proclamations for like the Civic Center. And if you, if you go up, I would encourage you all to go read some of these things that they say. But it's a lot about bringing community together and, and what the space was designed for. And we saw that firsthand as a family. What can, you know, an anchor like this do in a, in a downtown? And it can do a lot of really good things. You know, Old Town is, was, is what it is because of the investment that we've made here. And, and it's important to continue to leverage City Hall and Town Square Park for events and, and bringing the community together. And so, you know, Mr. Mayor, with a couple of the questions that you had, I'll just address those. But, but I, but for me, this is fundamentally my perspective of, you know, starting a young family and, and coming from a, coming from a legitimate small town where, you know, the, the VFW barbecue was where we hung out on a Saturday on Veterans Day. But like coming to a, a city like this that was growing and being visionary and, and placing, you know, community and residents at the center of what they do, I think speaks to the perspective that I have on some of these, some of these issues. So I don't necessarily just view it as, you know, a road closure or, or, you know, allowing traffic or not allowing traffic. I, I see it in, in a different perspective. So I want to start off with that. The Community Services Expo, yeah, Councilmember Stewart brought up, you know, taking it to Ronald Reagan Sports Park. You know, over the years, this event, we did it for a long time and then we stopped doing it when we went to the online registration. And, and then we started doing it again because you're missing that connection between some of our, some of our instructors and, and the community. So giving those instructors an opportunity, again, to get in front of families, but get in front of them in a way that sort of represents who we are and, and the community that we are. So using, utilizing the facility here is a great way to do that. It also, you know, on a Saturday with the farmer's market, it attracts different people that maybe wouldn't be there, right? So try to give people opportunities. Same thing with the health fair. And I think we even said when we had this conversation, like, we could put these events anywhere. I mean, we literally could put them anywhere, right? But would they be successful? Maybe, maybe not. But we could put them anywhere. But we're putting them there strategically for, for a reason, right? And it is to provide opportunities. So like the health fair and the, and the disaster preparedness fair, putting those together here, it's, it's a good way to, to meet the community where they are, right? The hospital, I went to the hospital one and it was nice, right? They did a good job. The hospital, I went to the hospital one and it was nice, right? They did a good job. It doesn't mean we should only do one. There should be many opportunities for residents to participate in some of this stuff. And then Cartoonapalooza is one that I really find a ton of value in. This is a youth demographic. This is an artist demographic, which traditionally doesn't get the same level of investment maybe that other, you know, interest groups, if you will, get. And so I think, you know, showing these, these young members of our community, this artist group that we value them and hosting it here, it sends a message. And again, I've been to that event several times. We typically, you know, make our way through the vendor area and, you know, get a, buy some R, right? Like, I think last year we had our dog, you know, someone sketched our dog and it was really cool. So I think, you know, fundamentally, that's where I come from this. I don't necessarily at times see the, like, maybe the highest and best use for space isn't, you know, cut through traffic from the freeway, right? Like, if we say, well, we keep it open because traffic and, you know, on a Friday night, we want to make sure people are getting home. Like, I don't necessarily think that's the best use of Mercedes Street. And then finally, we, and I'll have more to add because I'm, because I'm sure we'll have somewhat of a back and forth. But I had asked for, you know, what is the total city investment in Old Town, sort of arch to arch over the years? Because there was a lot of conversation of like, we need to get out of the way, right? Like, there are businesses down here that would probably be fine, right? There are several businesses down here that would probably be okay. But I think if you look at the totality of Old Town, having events down here and the infrastructure investments, whether it's wifi or the lights or the sidewalks or housing, the total city development, city investment in Old Town is north of $163 million. And I think that investment speaks to the success of Old Town in really, really, really important ways. I asked, I have a friend or a colleague in education that they own a business down here. And I had asked, and I'm not going to say who it is, but I had asked them if their business would be successful in a strip mall. And they said no. They said they rely on foot traffic. They rely on people being down here and us bringing people down here. And again, it kind of goes back to some of the conversations we had years ago about the farmer's market and those sorts of things and seeing the success of the farmer's market now. And so, like, I wanted to give that background of just having like a, like a different perspective maybe than others on some of this stuff. Like, the importance of valuing all, you know, sex of our community and making sure that we provide opportunities that are meaningful. And if some of these are, let's say, off the table, right? Like, if Puesca Mountain's off the table, we're not moving that. Well, then why not Cartoonapalooza? Why is that on the table, right? Like, these are people in our community, right? And so I think, you know, we have to think about that. And I appreciate breaking up the weekdays and the weekends because we're trying to bring people down here during the week. And, yeah, some of those days flex back and forth. So I think in my math, it goes anywhere from between eight and twelve depending on, you know, eight if the, if the events are, you know, on a weekday or a holiday, let's say, or, you know, twelve if it falls on a Saturday, right? Which will happen for Puesca Mountain Day, for there are, there are certain events that will fall on a Saturday. So, you know, the elephant in the room was the, was the ice rink. And I know you all saw a lot of the online commentary, but people aren't happy that the ice rink is, is not going to be here. Even seeing some of the businesses who maybe were, were for opening the road are now, you know, wishing that we hadn't got rid of the ice rink. I think there's opportunities to do other things. I don't think, I'm never, not necessarily completely always tied to history. But it is important to think about some of the old traditions that we have and creating new memories. But utilizing Civic, the Civic Center Quad, utilizing Town Square Park as an anchor for our community is how I, is how I see a lot of these events.
Yeah, so I'll piggyback on that. Really, because when we went into the Subcommittee, we were looking to reduce events open during peak hours, like the weekends and things that would really impact the businesses here in Old Town. And so we concentrated on eliminating as many of those as we could and you see we knocked six days up. But that was something we kind of started realizing. How many of these events happened during the week versus the weekend? And that's why we, we wanted the visual of the split of, you know, what, when were these events happening? And I, I think we both came away with the thought that as much as we're here for commerce, we're also here for community. And to create events and things that bring the community together, there's value in that. You know, just as much as there's value in commerce. And so you've got this fine line you're trying to walk as far as, you know, what, where's the value in something? And so, and just because we're doing the health fair here this year doesn't mean we're going to look at it and go, that really wasn't that impactful. Let's join with the, you know, we've got lots of flexibility. We're the government, right? So we can do really what we want to do. If it doesn't work, we don't have to keep doing it just because we've done it before. You know, that's, that's something I don't, I don't ascribe to. I'm like, if it's not working, let's cut it off and move on. And so, uh, yeah, you know, and so that's, that's where I came from when I looked at this is we, we really, like, we said, we were there for almost three hours and we were really going through every single event. Could it be moved? Would the impact be lessened of the event if we moved it? Like, like Tracy said, I wanted to move the, the Community Services Event to a CRC or some, some facility that, you know, actually we use for those, those classes. Maybe even have a visual of where this class is going to be. What is that, you know, a dance class? Let's show them the MRC. You know, show them where they're going to be dancing and have the teacher instruct. You know, to me, that, that almost has more impact to me. But I saw the value in the idea, okay, we keep it here, bring those people, bring the instructors here, have those same conversations here. Because really, what we're trying to do is bring our community into Old Town. We're trying to introduce them. All the people who, who are out there that think Old Town's not safe, Old Town, there's no parking. And, you know, I drove through Old Town on Saturday night and I was going by empty spot, empty spot, empty spot. So there, there's a lot more parking than people think out here. And so, so I think there's still room for us to grow. I think we've nailed the list down. I think we've pared it down to kind of like a bare minimum. But like I said, I'm not opposed to scratching something if it just doesn't work. And so, and, you know, Puesca Mountain, even the Fourth of July, there's another one that floats. That could be a Saturday one year and a Tuesday the next. So it's like, so I, that's why I, I think we did what we could do with what we had and we reduced it dramatically. Am I going to miss the ice rink? To me, that was my Hallmark moment, place. You know, you saw that ice rink and you just kind of, you swear you were watching a Hallmark movie, you know, and it was Temecula. So, but I understand it, thirty-eight days closed, closure of Mercedes, that was huge. And I could understand how that really crippled, especially businesses right here on Mercedes, on this side of the closure. On that side of closure, maybe not so much, but this side for sure. So, so I was okay with, with letting that one go. But it sure would be nice if there was some other way we can somehow resurrect somewhere if it, if it comes to be. So, but, so anyways, that, that was my thought process when I was going through this. It was, it was really more about community and commerce together. How do we balance that act? And I'm not necessarily willing to sacrifice community for commerce. I'm a businessman. I understand it. And, and so, but, but sometimes those, those rare events that we put on is what attracts that customer base to come back and to come back. So, yeah, it's a pain point. I get it. But the value is there also, so, so that's my story.
Councilmember Ron?
So, no, I appreciate the Subcommittee's work on this and trying to move things down a little bit. A couple, couple thoughts. One is on the hospital and, and health fair thing. You know, I mean, that's, neither one is what we would consider a signature event, right? And the attendance is not at par with a lot of the other events that are done. They're good, but, you know, but I, I wonder, you know, the value of actually having a joint event at the hospital. Highlight, you know, I mean, they're great partners of the city, so it, you know, sort of reaffirms that partnership. But, but allows the opportunity to have, you know, you know, to build more of a signature event at the hospital at a different location. I, I kind of really like the idea. I'm not sure if the hospital does or if that conversation has even happened. So maybe, you know, a quick outreach. But I, I wouldn't object to seeing, you know, that happen. I think it would be a great opportunity potentially. With regard to the veterans' concert, Aaron and I had a meeting with the Chair of the Symphony and the conductor not too long ago. And they shared something that I don't think was part of the conversation the Subcommittee knows, was playing in front of City Hall is actually very challenging for them. And, you know, we like to think, oh, the acoustics are great. There are a lot of negatives for the conductor and for the musicians at that venue. And so our conversation, Aaron, I don't know if now is the right time to bring this up, but the conversation came up with the CRC and maybe doing it at the amphitheater. And they liked it for a couple of reasons. One was not, not always in, you know, the November timeframe does the weather cooperate effectively for the concert, which does affect the instruments and the sheet music and everything else. And we've seen that over the years. But, you know, they can sort of back into the community space from the amphitheater as well to help protect them a little bit more. And so that kind of came up and, and they really liked the idea. And, you know, I would throw it out there that, you know, we have been working with the Symphony for many, many, many years now and they lack a stable venue on which to do their other concerts. And so one of the things that, and I know this isn't something that we can really kind of fold into tonight's conversation, but it would be great if, you know, we could have the conversation with Community Services and, and staff and others to see, you know, is there an opportunity to get them at that venue on a more regular basis for all of their concerts, including the Veterans Day concert? And, you know, I would like to pull that, you know, pull that together if we could because I think it's a great opportunity to support them and it reduces one more day, you know, of closures on the streets. And, and I think we, I kind of threw it out there at the meeting and they were very receptive to this. So, you know, I would like to see if maybe we could take care of that one and, and some other issues all at the same time. And then the last thing is the ice rink. Look, you know, strapping a couple of razor blades on my feet and, you know, stumbling across the ice is clearly not my jam. But if people are really into it and if it is this Hallmark thing for the city, then maybe we just consider relocating it to Sam Hicks, you know, or, or something adjacent and, and, you know, leave it up to, you know, staff to pick that location. But if it is that, you know, kind of small-town feel and, you know, it did have that. I mean, there is a lot of value to that. And if, you know, and if it does mean just sort of adjusting its location to somewhere where we don't have to have thirty-eight days of street closures, you know, I'm not opposed to that. I, I, my only argument would be if we, if we are going to keep it, that it be in Old Town because it's also part of the evening where people go out to a restaurant or anything else. If we move it to Ronald Reagan or something, it's kind of isolated, you're hanging out there at night. I'm not sure the neighbors, you know, surrounding the park necessarily want thirty-eight nights of, of lighting and, you know, the festivities. So it makes sense to kind of keep it in Old Town because we've tested that model and, you know, it, it seems to have worked. So those are my only comments is, you know, let's talk about the hospital, let's talk about the veterans' concert and use of that by the Symphony more regularly. And then ice rink, maybe a relocation. And I'm just shocked to hear me say that.
Mayor Protem.
Alrighty, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for, you know, all your work, especially the Subcommittee. I know, three hours, it's a long hit, but you guys rolled up your sleeves and did it, so thank you. And again, thank you to the Mayor for bringing this up forward. I think it's a conversation that nobody wanted to talk about, but you brought it forward and we're having the conversation. So I think it's good. I think we also really need to continue to evaluate why we're here. And I think Councilmember Schwenk said it best. And it's just having that community. You know, I've lived all over the world and if I could say anything, every good, great city has a central location. They have a town square where everything happens. Whether you're in Europe and you're, you know, you're having family experiences, communications, food, memories, all that needs to happen in the heart. And I, like, the centralized heart of an area is right here. That's what it was built for, that's why we're here. And I don't want to see that destroyed because we want to send, keep sending things out. And I think also, Stu, you had mentioned it's, it's like important for that balance to try and find that. And I think you guys did a great job at that, to be honest with you. Where am I at right here? So that being said, I can agree with everything that's been pushed forward. I do have a couple of questions about the Veterans Day. I love the idea of the barbecue. I think that's really neat. It brings a different perspective into it. Inside of our veterans Subcommittee, we had a veteran actually come in and talk. And I spoke to him before, but, you know, he actually brought some stuff up about the, the music. And, but they love it, like, they love it here. And I know it might be hard for them, but it's for the veterans. And I can see us growing when we start bringing community into it. I know, I'm thinking the amphitheater as, it's a great idea, but we outgrew the amphitheater, I think with some of the summer concerts, if I'm correct. I'm thinking, is that something that maybe we go to for a while and then maybe we come back here if we outgrow it, you know? But I do know the veterans really like being out here. Let me see, the only question I do have is why the eighth? So there was something on November eighth, I think it was, if I wrote it down, is the second Saturday of the month of where we want to hold that barbecue. Is there any, any reason specifically for that day or?
I believe it's a Saturday before Veterans Day was what we were trying to do.
My thought, just out of curiosity, or just throwing this kind of out there as, as a veteran, we all kind of, how many people take off during Veterans Weekend? They do a lot of things. And if we want to invite the community, what would we think about maybe having it the first Saturday of the month since we have a month for veterans? And we can have an entire kickoff for the month for Veterans Month. And it would be the first Saturday, we can get more people here who are in town and who are not on a holiday or vacation. So just throwing it out there, it might be a really good idea. But I love the barbecue thing and possibly having us out there and being more involved. I think it's a fantastic idea. So, great job, team, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we're going to do this.
Thank you very much. I will try to gather all my notes and thoughts here. I first want to start by thanking the Subcommittee for the work that you've put in. I know you almost put in over three hours. I think we're almost three hours here at this meeting. But it doesn't go unnoticed and you had definitely put in hard work with city staff. So I appreciate everything that you guys all did. I think it's important to note that the reason we're discussing street closures and events is because we have been given a very black and white option, right? You hold events in front of City Hall, Mercedes Street is closed. You do not hold events in front of City Hall, Mercedes Street is open. And I'll go back to that point in the end of the statement. That is essentially what we've been, been dealt with. And it would be interesting to go back and look at the original vision of Old Town. And was the original vision when holding events in front of City Hall to close off Mercedes Street? And I don't know if a city staff member could answer that or not. But I know for instance, talking even with the Thursday Night Market when it opened last year, I was speaking with the owners and when the Thursday Night Market opened, the first time it opened, Mercedes was open. So the intent of that wasn't to close off Mercedes. So it'd be interesting to go back to 2009, 2010 when this was built and planned out. Because I love, and I think I need to get that point across, is that I love the idea of holding events in front of City Hall. I love bringing the community here. I love all of that. And I, I agree and I see that vision. Where I differ is the road closures, right? I, I see Mercedes Street as a street. And it's, we only have two, north and south streets in Old Town. So I see Mercedes as a street that needs to remain open as much as possible. But I also agree with that there are, there are certain, you know, intentional and signature events where Mercedes and the community as a whole, and the business community and the residents and we all up here would agree that it's, that it's okay to, you know, negatively impact businesses if it's for the betterment of the community. And even the businesses that came up and spoke at the last meeting said that, they said, hey, we love the- the last meeting said that. They said, hey, we love the events. The events are not the issue that we have. The issue that we have are the road closures that negatively impact our commerce and our business. But even with that being said, they were still okay with negatively impacting their business for the betterment of the community. I think it is our job up here to figure out which signature events we want to keep here. And we have to be intentional when making that decision. And for instance, with, with Puesca Mountain, like, in my head, I just picture them different, Puesca Mountain Day and Cartoon Palooza. When I, when I hear Puesca Mountain Day, I imagine our partners that, at Pachanga, the tribe, that came to City Hall, not this City Hall, but the old City Hall, and fought to get Puesca Mountain, right? That was a fight at City Hall. And that event deserves to stay in front of this City Hall. And in my head, you know, those signature events, those intentional events, those need to be here, even if they negatively impact commerce on those days. 100% agree with you. And I would hope that businesses would agree as well. And not to put Cartoon Palooza on a lesser scale, I just value certain partnerships and certain events at a different level. And Puesca Mountain is one of those. You know, the Fourth of July Parade is one of those. The Christmas Parade is one of those. The Halloween, all of those signature intentional events. Thursday Night Market as well. It's a great event that brings a lot of people here. We just need to figure out the, the specific regulations, the timeframe, the days, the amount of days that we have those events. But those events are signature events to Temecula, signature events to Old Town. And it is our job up here to figure out which ones to keep here. And the, the subcommittee did a great job of, of bringing that down, right? We started off, there's one chart that says 78 and a half days. There's another chart that says 82 and a half days. I like to go with 82 and a half, because obviously it's a larger number. So let's just say 82 and a half days of road closures. We went to the last meeting here, we brought it down to 31. And now we're bringing it down to 25. So the subcommittee and the council up here has done a tremendous job. And I think that we need to continue on that path. And I think, you know, I was talking to our city attorney earlier, and when City Hall was initially built, insurance had an issue with the way the pavers are in front of City Hall, in front of Mercedes, right? It was hard to insure that. And that's what our chief of police talks about, is the walkway in front of City Hall, when you walk across Mercedes Street, it doesn't feel like a normal road, because there's pavers there. It's not your typical asphalt road. And what I would ask my, my colleagues today would be to go back to the subcommittee after this, after this meeting, and meet with our city manager, meet with our city attorney, meet with our head of public works, meet with Chief Regali, Lieutenant Pearson, and Chief Crater. And figure out a solution where we can have events in front of City Hall and keep the road open. Because there are absolutely solutions that can be had. Whether that's getting a crossing guard to be there during all Thursday Night Markets, and they make sure that some, everyone gets across safely. Whether that's putting crosswalks in. Whether that's asphalting the actual crosswalk across Mercedes Street, but leaving the pavers elsewhere in place. Stop signs in front of the Y right here in Mercedes. There, there are avenues that I believe that should be looked at to hold events in, in front of City Hall and keep Mercedes open. And I think it can be done. And I believe the, the Saturday Farmer's Market is a great example of that, right? It's on Mercedes Street. It's just north of Fifth Street. There are arguably, like, over 1,000 people at that Farmer's Market, and there are no road closures. So we have to look at events like that that happen in Old Town, that do not have road closures, that have more people, and we can do it safely. And there's a way, working as, together as a subcommittee with our city manager, our city attorney, our chief of police, and chief of fire, to make sure that we are able to hold events in front of City Hall safely, and making sure that we also allow adequate infrastructure for people to get to the businesses and for people to get to home. And that, that's really what it comes down to for me. It's, we've been given, again, the way I started off, the black and white of, if you hold an event, you have to close down Mercedes. If you don't hold an event, you have, you're allowed to keep Mercedes open. I think there is room for adjustment and improvement in that arena. So I would ask, you know, my colleagues to, to do essentially more work in this, to see if we can find, you know, an ultimate resolution where we hold those events in front of City Hall and keep Mercedes Street open. Because at the end of the day, I completely agree, councilmembers do it, it's a balance between commerce and community. It's absolutely, and that's the balance that we have to deal with up here. And I think the subcommittee did great work with that. I think our city council has done a great work with that. And there's always more work to be done. And I also agree with Councilmember Schwank, where Old Town would not be Old Town without the civic investment that the city of Temecula did. 100%. But I also would agree that it would not be Old Town without the businesses and their vision of their businesses that make Old Town, Old Town. Those, you know, signature hallmark restaurants that are in Old Town, and other businesses that are in Old Town. It's been a community effort, and it's been a collaboration between the civic investment, as well as private investment, that has made Old Town, Old Town. And we need to ensure that Old Town remains that Old Town that we know and love for generations to come. And that's, I know that, that is our vision for all of us up here, is to keep Old Town amazing, keep people coming back, while having ample roads and ample parking, so everyone can have access to the business and the residents that, that they need and desire.
Councilmember Ron?
So, I, I mean, at what point is the horse dead, and we're just going to continue beating it? Because I, I think we've done the job twice already now, right? And the original plan was 29 days, I think. And all of the businesses that were here that did speak, you know, a lot of these folks said, and, you know, I spoke to a lot of folks in Old Town after that meeting as well, said, oh, no, the 29, that was a good number. I mean, we were, they were good with that, right? They came and they said, the closures, as is right now, way too much. But now we've gone from, what, 78, 80, whatever it is, down to?
25.
25. I mean, I mean, it's a, you know, substantial reduction in, in that. And my, my concern is, is, you know, again, nobody seemed to have too much of, of an issue with that. So, so why, I don't, I don't see the value of pushing it even further. Especially because in a year to two years, we could always bring this back and say, hey, you know what? This plan didn't work. So I'd hate to see us go from, you know, 80 to zero, and not have a stopgap somewhere in between, where we say, you know, is, is this working here? And I think we've adjusted enough, enough events, and, you know, we've had some conversations about other things, too, that, you know, I think there's, you know, still some small carve-outs that we can, we can accomplish here tonight. But, but I think it's a good stopgap, and see, see what happens before we, you know, push that, that any farther. And, you know, anything, you know, kicking it back to the subcommittee, I mean, you guys, you guys met it on this. I, I, you know, I'm not confident that reframing City Hall and, I, I'd hate to see asphalt in front of City Hall, to be honest. I think that the, the look is, is a solid look. Yeah, there's some, some issues with, you know, the liability or whatever when it originally came up. But, but I think that, you know, it's a beautiful area. And, and I, I, I remember back when City Hall was being built. And I know a lot of folks, you know, that have been here, working as, as staff and others, could attest to the idea that, no, I think the design of that was intentional. And it, it was, was put together to have those community gatherings. And I don't think there was any concern at the time, because it was almost immediate that, you know, those, those poles were put up, the chains were put up the way they were, and they were able to come down and open up this whole section to the community, with the park out front and the fountain and everything else, and that commerce and that connection between all of that happening, you know, almost, almost immediately. And so, you know, so I would hate for us to, you know, pull this Band-Aid off any further than, than we have already tonight. That's just my recommendation.
No, thank you very much. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. So I was gonna basically say some of that. But if you look at our quad, there is no curb. So it was designed as actually an event central for the city of Temecula. And that is just part of the same brickwork that goes all the way up to City Hall. So, so yeah, it was designed to create that, that event center for the city of Temecula, because there is no curb. When you said that it's, it's a street, well, it's not a street in front of City Hall. It literally is not, because there are no curbs or gutters in front of City Hall. And so, so it was designed for exactly what we're using it for. And so, so, so that's, that's the thing that I go back to. And even like the, the market night, you know, we combined it with the concerts series, summer concert series. There's no way you could keep that open. I mean, literally, there's 1,000 people, sometimes 2,000 people at these concerts, and their chairs are all set up all over the place. We need the street to, to actually use that for the concert series. So, so there would be no way you could actually, and that's a Thursday night on top of it. So that's, those Thursday night and any, any events that take place Sunday to Thursday, absolutely does nothing to negatively impact the commerce or the businesses in town. If anything, it brings people into the town that wouldn't have normally come. I mean, those, those events create business for the people, even if the road is closed, you get 1,000 people. I guess, I guarantee you, they're going to filter off into, and, and a lot of people get there early, especially on the concert series. They'll get there two or three hours early, set up their chairs, so they, they got a good seat. And then they go into Old Town and eat, do whatever, you know? So it creates that, what we're trying to create, one community, two commerce. And so for me, that, that's exactly what that quad area was designed for, based on the construction. We don't even need to ask anybody. We can just look at it. It's, it's right there. There are no curbs. There are no gutters. It literally is not a street. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I have a couple of things. And so the ice rink, let's talk about that just briefly. So it isn't just a matter of like picking another spot. There's obviously costs involved. So it's like $80,000 city investment every year for the ice rink. We, we would still need, that, that investment would still be needed at Sam Hicks. So we looked into it, and we said, can we do it at Sam Hicks? Could we do it at Sixth Street or something like that? So we did look into that. Those costs would still be there. We're going to have a even tougher discussion about budgets and TCSD budget and events coming up. Like, I, I think if, if the business community would want to help us support that, like, hey, let's figure it out, right? But we sort of looked at it from a road closure perspective, and then from, you know, an operation budget, you know, $80,000, pretty significant, you know? And again, like, the images I showed at the beginning, when there was only one ice rink in town, maybe had a greater impact. But now that there's one at Pelzer, and there's one at Galway, and things like that. So it, it, maybe it's not having that same impact. So we thought, well, let's just try to re-envision Town Square Park for the holidays. We've got some cool ideas that'll, that'll come forward soon. But I'm totally happy to entertain, and I think we should entertain, the idea of, you know, potentially moving that somewhere and, and looking for funding through the business community, if it's, if that's something that, that they want. The concerts that you mentioned, like, November for outdoor concerts, especially here at City Hall, it's windy, it's cold, it's, if we're going to do that, the, the CRC, which, this was, this conversation was brought forward by, by staff in the subcommittee meeting. So we had heard about the meeting and how, and their thoughts on it. Yeah, like, let's use a CRC. It's perfect for it. And if we do something in the summertime, like, we could do, you know, patriotic salute to veterans in the summertime. Like, like, just doing it in November to do it, because that's Veterans Day and Veterans Month, that's, I understand that. But it's outdoor concert. And maybe cold November is not like the best for that. So those are a couple of things. The idea that events are a drag on, on Old Town. I pulled sales tax data from 2014 to 2024. So if you go back to 2014, sales tax from just arch to arch is, was, was $750,000 a year in 2014. Anyone want to guess what it was in 2023? It was $1.75 million in 2023. And the only dip was COVID. And COVID was, in fact, larger than 2014, 15, and 16 in sales tax revenue. Crazy to even think about that. So I, I look at the things that we do as free marketing in, in many ways for businesses. Like, you're, like, everything we do is marketing. And if you think about it in that perspective, you're creating, you know, moments for people to share. And, and it's why people come here, right? And so the, so that's sort of part of the, the thinking that I think these, these investments that we make, you know, is in support of. It's not in competition with businesses. It's in support of businesses. So, so there's that. And then I won't read the entire Old Town specific plan, but I, I do think it is valuable for us to understand some of these visioning documents and the time and energy that was put into something like the Old Town specific plan. There are all sorts of objectives and goals in these documents that we know, right? So one objective, or one of, for the Old Town specific plan, it's, it's animating the public realm. And that sounds very like nebulous, right? But it's bringing community together. And it says, promote the use of the Civic Plaza for public gatherings, outdoor concerts, or festivals, and other community events in the Old Town, in Old Town. Continue holding city signature events. And it goes on and on. There are these things littered throughout this document. And while I appreciate Councilmember Stewart's thoughts on, on the street, and whether it is a street or not, I do want to ask our public works director, his thoughts on it. Because you, you were here at that time, and maybe you could speak to some of that vision for Old Town.
Sure. So before landing this dream job of director of public works for city of Temecula, I was actually on the private side. And it's where I got in contact with a lot of the staff here. And I had the privilege of being the engineer of record on the design of Mercedes Street, and the Y, and everything. And I remember being in the project design meetings that started with our former city manager, Sean Nelson. Greg Butler was deputy director at the time, and he was leading the project. He was project manager. So the first thing that we did was, we came out to this blank lot. It was empty. They were moving the help center over to Pujo. So they were carting that off. And Greg and I walked the entire length of not only this City Hall area, Town Square area, but we walked all the way down Mercedes. We walked all the way back. And one thing that we had to do, and he, he gave me direction, was as you go across, and you go from Sixth, Fifth, Fourth, you know, even Main Street going across, there used to be these huge dips. Because all the drainage ran down the streets and went into Myriad Creek. So the first direction he gave me is, first of all, I want all of these out of here. You know, he wanted Mercedes to be flat. And then he said, and then we're going to make the front Town Square area flat all the way across, include the pavers, do that. And then I had to design the Y to go down to capture it all. And he said, the reason we're going to do that, we're going to make it all flat, is because it's going to be like a multi-use area for different things that the city does. He didn't go into detail with me about what those things might have been, or the events, but that was the direction I received at the time when designing Mercedes and the Y. So that, that's what ended up occurring. And then we put the pavers in, in order to slow traffic, put the bollards up, chains, to make sure people were safe, and then had the Main Street Y, you know, going down and everything. So that was the history of the walk I had with the design team.
Thanks, Ron.
No, thank you very much. And I think that it's important to see that, and like you said, with the bollards, it's not the vision, it's built and that it's done, right? It's ever evolving. Because initially, you know, the bollards were just put in place a few months ago. And those weren't on the original plan or the original vision for Old Town. Same with the, the chain link fence in front of City Hall, right? That was an add-on after it was developed and built, right? So these, these things change over time. And all I am asking is that we continue to evolve with our city as it evolves, and evolve with the community as it evolves. And maybe you speak with, you know, our chief of police and our fire, and our attorney, and Ron, and our city manager's office. And they say, hey, there, there's no possible way to do events in front of City Hall, regardless of the mitigation, you know, procedures that we put into place. But at least we looked at every avenue that we could. And at the end of the day, to me, you know, I, I understand, Councilmembers do it, that you're saying it's not a street. To me, it, it is a street, right? It, it has a different foundation, but it's still a street, it's still a thoroughfare, it's still a north-south street in Old Town that people utilize to get to and from Old Town. And, but I, I totally understand everyone's thoughts and perspectives, and I respect all those thoughts and perspectives. And I think we just have, you know, different means to get to the same goal, which are the same goal is to increase commerce in Old Town while building a community here. And I think we all have that same goal. We just have different means of getting to that, to that end goal. And I totally, you know, I've, I've read through the Old Town document, and it talks about bringing that community to Old Town, and having that, the civic center be the epitome of Old Town. And I love that. And I could be wrong, but nowhere in that document does it talk about the closure of street to make those events happen. And that's all I'm asking. I love the events. The events are fantastic. I love bringing people to Old Town. I love creating place in Old Town. I agree that the events are not a drag on Old Town, and I think they are very beneficial for our community. All I am asking is to look into how we keep the street open as much as possible. And I think the subcommittee did a great job. And I'm not even saying trim it down even more. All I'm saying is, is it possible in the future to hold events in front of City Hall with the street open? And if we do that, you know, project, if you will, or do that study, and it says, hey, there's no possible way to do it. It doesn't matter if there's a crossing guard, doesn't matter if there's stop signs, it doesn't matter if it's a different pavement, then it is what it is. But that's all I got.
Mayor Potem?
Not to belabor anything, but just, last thing, I just want to just push out from what you're saying, because I'm hearing what you're talking about. And I love the fact that you're now saying, hey, you know, we're good with the, you know, the reducing of the events. And it sounds like we're all on the same page with that.
we're good with the, you know, the reducing of the events, and it sounds like we're all on the same page with that. What I'm hearing from you directly is the fact that you're concerned just about the street closure. And I listen to Stu, and from where his perspective is, and I'm listening to Ron, I'm listening to everybody. And I think the word that, for me, I, like I said last week, or two weeks ago, whenever we did this, is coming out as a mom and looking at safety. When my kids were little, and we would go to the Preparedness, or the, what is it, the Preparedness Fair, and they would run around on the jumpy's, and they would put fires out. If I have a little child running around having fun and enjoying themselves, and a child runs out into that street and gets hit, it's not worth it. None of this is worth it. And so for us to close down for safety, if we are a city of safety, we cannot sit here and say that, that, in my opinion, and talking to also other individuals, that this is a safe environment. Now, I appreciated what you said about the Farmer's Market, and we go down there several times with our kids, but the one thing I agree with that is, or not agree, but one thing is it's enclosed by tents. So it's a little bit more enclosed area for kids to just run off into a street. And again, parents, you need to always be, you know, vigilant of your kids. But at the same, same way, I still want to make sure that families can enjoy themselves. You know, if a kid wants to go play over there in the, you know, the jumpy thing, I want them to have fun and feel protected, and a parent doesn't have to be on their child, and they don't want to come down because, down in this area, because they don't feel safe. And that community has to feel safe in order for a community to be involved with it. So for me, as a mom, as a parent, as a city councilwoman, I could not sit here, I believe at this point in time, and not close that road because of safety for children. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ron?
Just a quick, because I love the numbers. I mean, really what we're talking about is 4.6% of weekdays are impacted annually. 11.5% of weekends, right? I mean, that's really what we're talking about. Or conversely, 95% of the time, we are open for business on the weekdays, and roughly 89% of the time, we are open on the weekends. You know, that, for the amount of traction that this brings to Old Town, amount of events and commerce, and, you know, I think the, you know, hallmark factor, I, that's a win, you know? And it's significantly less than it was a year ago, and so that's, you know, that's about as far as I'm willing to cut this cake, or however the expression might go.
So I'd like to make the motion that we accept the Subcommittee's recommendations and move this item forward.
And I second that. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Kalfis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you to my colleagues for the civil discussion. All right, moving on to items for future city council agendas. Do my colleagues have anything that they'd like to see on future city councils?
I do, actually.
Councilmember Schwank?
I want to put a moratorium on future council agendas for six months. So I'll look forward to seeing that back next week.
I'll second that motion.
I know. I was gonna say, I've got like three items, but I can wait. It's fine.
Don't make me pull out the moratorium card, okay?
All right, seen none. City manager report?
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want it to go, it was on the consent calendar. Item number seven was unanimously approved, but for the general public or anyone that's still tuning in, that's a big deal. I think it shows the vision of this city. I think it shows the vision of the city council. And what the item basically did was, it's talking about, it's approving $5 million of state grant funds that we procured to begin the design of French Valley Parkway Phase 3, okay? We haven't yet finished Phase 2. We're about 30 days out. We're gonna finish $133 million freeway project, and tonight you guys awarded the design contract for Phase 3. So I couldn't let that go, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me. But I just, I just think it's important for folks to know we're constantly looking out into the future, and that's just good planning and good foresight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Attorney?
We had a closed session. We have no items to report under the Brown Act. And my apologies for my seven-year-old granddaughter pushing the Ring doorbell and it popping up on my phone quite frequently. She loves to hear the dog bark, so my apologies. Thanks for showing me how to turn it off.
Thank you very much. And with that being said, can we put up the slide here? So tonight's meeting, with great sadness, we will adjourn in the loving memory of Shirley Jean Crater, who is the mother of our Temecula Fire Chief, John Crater, as well as Bob Harrison, who is the father of our finance director, Jennifer Hennessy. You all are all in our thoughts and prayers, and we are thinking of you. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting.